Mayor Pro- Mayor Denise Delmar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Harabedian.
Here.
Councilmember Rachel Arzamendi.
Present.
Councilmember John Capocha.
Here.
And Councilmember Jean Gosh.
Here.
Madam, you have a quorum. You may conduct city business.
Thank you. And we'll ask our Mayor Pro Tem John Harabedian to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. If you could please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My invocation is really just a thank you to city staff, but most of all the volunteers for a phenomenal July 4th parade.
Yeah.
As always, you know, hats off to everyone. It's amazing to me every year that it gets done as well as it does. And from start to finish, it's just, you know, it's really all volunteers. There's a lot of staff that work on it too. But the amount of volunteers that actually make that thing run, it's just phenomenal. And so, a lot of faces here we saw on the parade route. We saw their helping and enjoying it as well. So, my invocation is really a thank you to our volunteers and our staff. And I guess a second point of inspiration would be the safe survival and rescue of those 13 boys in Thailand. I mean, to me, that really was a modern day miracle. I mean, I know when I first heard the news two weeks ago, I just assumed that they were all dead. And I think that to see that international, you know, effort, a lot of different countries, experts from all different parts of the world coming together to save those 12 boys and their coach was, to me, just, it really was an act of God and something, you know, bigger than humanity. And I think it really is a testimony to all that's good in the world. You know, there's things that we see in the world that really make us question the direction of society sometimes. But then there's things that happen that really give us faith and encouragement. And to me, that was, you know, one of the most inspirational things I've ever, I've ever seen from a distance. So, to me, you know, I'll kick off the meeting with that, with those two points. And thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda? And this is for our 6:30 meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How about the meeting minutes from June 26th? Did you all had the opportunity to read them?
I did. Looked good to me.
Any changes, questions? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't here.
So we have four approval and Councilmember?
Oh, sorry. I abstain. I wasn't here either.
So...
I'll move. Sorry, it's just the three of us. I'll move.
And I'll second.
Three approved, two abstained. Thank you. Do we have any reports from our City Council?
I'll go first. I've been gone for a month, but just today I did meet as the Planning Commission liaison with the chairperson and the chairman and also with, Gabe was in the meeting for a while, our city manager, and also Mr. Gonzalez, our director. So it was a very good meeting. The two planning commissioners, John Hutt and Bob Spears, felt it was a good meeting and that we're looking forward to doing it again. And I would make one more recommendation that maybe we should have one more councilperson, maybe rotate to attend the meeting who's ever, well, because there's no Brown Act violation. And the discussion was just really good about, you know, how we might see things. And of course, I can't speak for the council, but I give them some kind of indications of how I would guess the council might feel about things. And it was just really, really useful. We all felt good about it. I thought it was going to take an hour and we spent two hours talking about various things, so.
And just a little history on that. We made a decision that instead of having a council liaison at each of the Planning Commission meetings, because it's really, you're not able to participate. And because some things do come up to Planning Commission that may come up to City Council, we are having these quarterly meetings. And it sounds like it was successful.
Very good. Great idea. Just, we never thought of that, but thanks, City Manager, for coming up with this suggestion.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Aside from lending my name to Mayor Pro Tem's compliments for our 4th of July effort, I have no report.
I don't, I don't think we can thank staff and volunteers enough for the 4th of July, 3rd of July. It was just really well attended, always very well organized, a little warm, but not as warm as we've seen in past years. So thank you to everyone. I also wanted to share that I had an opportunity to meet with our new representative for the San Gabriel Valley Metropolitan Water District. And I understand he's, may, or planning to, or has already met with the Water Subcommittee, but it's, it's good to at least have a face-to-face and meet the individual and also talk about some of the issues that we're hoping that he can advocate for.
No report from me.
Madam Mayor, can I add to our...
Sure.
We did have a Water Subcommittee meeting right before this meeting where Mr. Prince attended that meeting and was very productive. And we all got to meet with him and hear his thoughts about the district and some of the big issues we're facing. And I think we all came away with a real positive attitude about it.
The only thing I have to add is, a while back, we approved a little filming advertisement for Sierra Madre. And tomorrow is the filming. And I'm honored to be able to do part of the voiceover.
Fun.
The introduction. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow.
It'll be fun.
And then I'll let you all know when it airs. Right now is our time for public comment, for items not on the City Council agenda, or I'm even going to say the Library Board agenda. So any public comment on items not on the agenda, and because we are trying to get this wrapped up before 7 o'clock, I will limit comments to three minutes.
You're going to get tired of seeing me.
Hi Darlene.
Good evenings. City Council, Mayor Delmar. I'm Darlene Papa with Lifeline for Pets, a rescue organization extraordinaire. You've seen my column in three local newspapers. And I'm here tonight without an adoptable animal for two reasons. Well, three, actually. I know you've got a big discussion coming up, so I'll try to be brief. First, to say again to all the kitty lovers out there, we're looking for a few good homes to adopt or foster one of our cats, especially a shy one. They're all on our cute website at lifelineforpets.org. We're overwhelmed with several sweet but shy cats who just need some confidence. A cat, a quiet, patient home would be ideal. So I'm leaving some of our cards in the lobby along with the applications for fostering. And if you're interested, or if you know somebody who might be, please take one. Secondly, speaking about fostering, I'm here to thank two very special people who have just completed a stint of fostering from Lifeline for Pets. And that would be our mayor, Denise Delmar, and her husband Steve. They volunteered to foster an adorable kitten, Chrissy, and welcomed this little bundle of fluff into their home, socialized her with their resident, two dogs, and two adult cats, all of whom fell in love with Chrissy. So thanks to Denise and Steve's kind efforts, Chrissy went to her forever home just today.
And we're going to miss her terribly.
So Lifeline for Pets would like to thank them again. And Denise, I'm presenting you with a small token of our appreciation.
It's a picture of your little foster. Oh. Look, you too, you too can foster. Come right here.
He's little. Little. My dog would eat her.
Thank you again. And I'm just going to add on, I know this probably isn't protocol, but Steve and I have two cats and two dogs. They're a little older. And we knew that kitty season was coming up, so we said, "Sure, if you need us to, we'll foster a kitten." And this little girl brought so much life into all of our animals. It really got them playing again and active. They fell in love with her. And it was fun to be able to socialize her and teach her how to play and teach her how to behave with the other animals. And I got to meet her adoptive family, which is a wonderful young couple in Los Angeles. So we are sad to see Chrissy go. And of course, if need be, we will certainly foster another kitten. It was a lot of fun. And, you know, it's a great way to help out our animal world without making that total commitment that you have to if you adopt. Thank you. Thank you Denise. Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, Council. My name is Hector Rodriguez. I am a field representative for Assemblymember Chris Holden. I have already met some of you in recent times, but I'm here today to introduce myself as the field representative that will be covering the city of Sierra Madre moving forward. Some of you may have already heard that Faith Lee has accepted another opportunity. And now I've been given the opportunity to represent this wonderful city. So I open myself up to you all, to the residents of Sierra Madre, the mayor, city manager, the chief of police, and all the council members to please look to me as a resource as I look forward to representing the Sierra Madre and the Assemblymember's 41st Assembly District. So, thank you for having me.
So, tell me, because it's just among us. So Sierra Madre is really the plum assignment, right?
I will be representing Sierra Madre and Monrovia, but...
But Sierra Madre is the...
Sierra Madre, Sierra Madre has my left ear.
It's just us. We won't say anything.
Any other questions, I'd be happy to. If not, I would love to invite everyone to our upcoming event on August 4th. It's our annual Block Party and Resource Fair. I have put flyers out in the lobby. And it's a fun event for all ages, free to all community members. So we look forward to having you there on August 4th in Pasadena.
Thank you. Welcome. Do we have any other public comment on items not on the agenda tonight? Okay, C and N, I'll go ahead and close public comment. So tonight, we have a bittersweet presentation. One of our city employees, longtime city employees, is retiring. And we would like to recognize Jill Schofield. And do we have a staff member to assist with that? Come to the podium. I'll meet you.
So Jill's retirement party is officially Thursday, so we can all come and say nice things to her in person there, starting at 2 o'clock. I've spoken about Jill a lot at council meetings because in her year as acting director, she has oversaw a massive change at the library. Everything from budget to splitting a department up, to changes in staff, to changes in assignments, to getting used to an executive team that she hadn't sat with before. And she's just done such a wonderful and phenomenal and amazing job. And every time I talk about it, I try and just push the retirement out just a couple more months. But she's told me to quit asking her to do that. And she is going to retire for real this time. And it's just remarkable watching her and realizing how much she dedicated to the city and in her last year here to really come into a leadership position and put her stamp on a transition in the library that will really be quite a, quite a good legacy for you. So congratulations, well-earned retirement. If you sign the paper, it will be well-earned. If you don't sign the retirement paper, you're welcome to stay.
And Jill, in recognition from city of Sierra Madre, Sierra Madre Public Library, 1994 to 2018, the City Council hereby recognizes Jill Schofield for her dedication to providing an outstanding library for the community of Sierra Madre and offers congratulations on her well-earned retirement in the city of Sierra Madre. Presented this post day of July 2018, Mayor Denise Delmar, Mayor Pro Tem John Harabedian, Councilmembers Rochelle Arzamendi, John Capocha, and Jean. So you're going to be the first person to have our councilmembers, our councilmembers.
Sure.
Absolutely. Jill, would you like to...
It's my husband, Tim.
Hi, Tim.
And my younger son, Peter.
You guys are way more important than us.
That's fine. We'll see you in October.
There you go. Thank you so much. And as we are.
I really am going to miss her.
Well, very, very briefly, thank you for this recognition. It's been a great honor to work for the city of Sierra Madre for so many years. And I think I can honestly say there's never been a dull moment. And I think that's going to be proven later this evening as well. So thank you very much.
Okay. We're ready. Looks like we're going to do the consent items.
Ms. Mayor, we have five items on consent this evening. Item A, second reading of ordinance 1399, reauthorizing the city's public educational and governmental access support fee. Item B, cancellation of both regular August 2018 City Council meetings. Item C, consideration of amendment to the Raftellus Financial Consultants Professional Services Agreement to cover additional cost of the water and wastewater rate study. Item D, consideration of resolution number 1834, authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to the 2017 installment purchase agreement and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents and the taking of all other actions required in connection therewith. And item E, adoption of resolution 18-38 of the City Council of the city of Sierra Madre approving certain demands.
Thank you. Any questions on items A, B, C, D, or E?
I have a comment on C, but no questions.
Open this up for public comment, for items A, B, C, D, or E. C and N, we'll bring it back to council. And Mayor Pro Tem, you had a question regarding our comment on C?
On C, you know, on the Raftellus contract and entering into or providing this additional amount, I think that it's, I think from a relational standpoint, the right thing to do. I think that they, from the staff reporting and talking with staff, it sounds like they did do things outside the scope of the agreement. I think from a, you know, kind of a best practices, you know, lessons learned standpoint, I think in the future, we just need to get the message to them that, you know, more formal notice about how much they're over and actually getting per the contract a written amendment, which the contract was a maximum amount contract for $74,000. And it said, "Any amounts, you know, paid over that should have been approved per written amendment." And we didn't do that. And I think that, you know, they deserve the money. I think we should pay them. I think they did a great job. But I think going forward, we should just make it imperative that they, they follow the letter of the contract. So that's my only comment. I don't, I don't think that we shouldn't pay it, but...
And I just want to piggyback on that because I, you know, doing the calculations, it looked like it was about 15 days of work extra that they did and obviously deserved the money. But, you know, going forward, if they're going to, if we ask them to do something out of scope, they need to come and say, "This is out of scope. This is what it could cost," so that we can get that agreement firmed up. Do we have any other comments on A, B, C, D, or E?
On one D, the only edit would be on the contract and provision Roman numeral three. It should be on July 11th, not July. I think there's like a BB in there instead of a TH, and that's it.
So with that change to item number D, do I have a motion for, to approve A, B, C, D, and E?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have passed the consent calendar. Next, we have a discussion. This is a safe, clean water program. Los Angeles County proposed special parcel tax. We talked about this briefly a few councils ago, and we're coming back. And it looks like we have our staff ready to present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Item number two on your agenda is a discussion on the proposed safe, clean water countywide parcel tax. Councilmember Capocha requested this item be on the agenda. And after providing some basic information, I will turn the discussion over to him. On July 17th, the County Board of Supervisors will consider approving the inclusion of this parcel tax on the November 6th ballot. The parcel tax will require a 2/3 vote. Property owners in LA County will be taxed at a rate of 2.5 cents per square foot of impermeable surface on their parcel. Government parcels, parcels in Antelope Valley, and a yet-to-be-determined level of low-income or senior property owners will be exempt. County estimates that the parcel tax will bring $300 million per year. The revenues are intended to pay for stormwater projects and projects that have additional benefits, such as drought resiliency, would be prioritized. 50% of the revenues would go to regional projects. 40% of the revenues would go directly back to the cities. And 10% of the revenues would go to the county for the administration and support. Staff, along with Councilmember Capocha, has attended monthly COG Water Committee meetings and have been able to closely follow the evolution of this parcel tax. Staff has provided additional details and analysis in your staff report and is available to answer questions. Ultimately, staff is seeking direction on this item. And with that, I will turn the discussion over to Councilmember Capocha.
Okay. And I have a lot to say about this, so tell me when you have had enough, and I'll shut up.
Okay, well, we need to start the library at 7:00.
That gives you six minutes.
And they need five minutes to set up.
So first of all, first of all, what I'm asking is that we create a resolution or something like that to oppose the tax. So that's my basic ask here. If we can do a letter, whatever, I would just like to, you know, if you're in agreement, convince you that we should notify the County Board of Supervisors that we're opposed to this. But let me tell you, in addition to what you heard from the staff report, the main reason I think that this is a bad idea is because the money that you folks will be paying in a tax is not going to benefit you, number one. The runoff pollutants in the San Gabriel Valley never reach waterways where quote-unquote beneficial uses are impaired. 95% of the San Gabriel Valley stormwater is already captured and percolated, either at the Santa Fe spreading grounds or as far as the Whittier Narrows. So capturing the water and percolating it sooner is not helpful to water supplies. And the pollution isn't affecting anything other than really what are today engineered storm channels. Also, the two basic justifications for the tax are flawed, that if we're going to increase water supplies and spend money to do it, it should be done in the most cost-effective manner and is best left to the respective water agencies to provide water. Stormwater capture may or may not be the most cost-effective method. You know, leave it to the experts to figure out the best way to provide you water at the, in the most cost-effective way. So even if stormwater capture is cost-effective, taxing you is not the way to do it. It should be integrated into the water rates that you pay. Okay? Funding for MS4 compliance via a countywide parcel tax is premature because of, number one, the inappropriateness of the MS4 permit. LA County is the only region in the U.S. that is burdened by these so-called watershed management or enhanced watershed management programs. Everyone else is subject to an iterative process where if a pollution is detected, you apply a best practice to correct it. So LA County is the only one doing it. If you're on one side of the San Jose Creek, you're subject to the iterative process. If you're on the other side, you have to build massive projects to alleviate the so-called pollution. Okay? The permit is supposedly to force compliance with the Clean Water Act, but the current interpretation of the original intent of the Clean Water Act is a perversion. It was never meant to prevent, or it was meant to prevent industrial discharges into quote-unquote navigable waters of the United States. And some of us are old enough to remember when the Cuyahoga River in Ohio caught on fire. And that's what started the Clean Water Act. So it's been, like I say, I believe a perversion to where a municipality is required to have a permit. A permit basically implies that if you can't meet the terms of the permit, that you should stop doing what the permit is trying to regulate. We can't stop God from making it rain, so we can't stop discharging the water into the flood control channels that were designed to accept the water. But even so, EPA guidelines only require that to achieve compliance with the MS4 program, we should follow an approved stormwater management plan and apply best practices via the iterative process, only if an exceedance is detected. But prior to the permit's issuance in 2012, we've never even measured whether or not we're contributing to pollution into these engineered storm channels where there are no beneficial uses. So aside from that, the Regional Board has created requirements that are in excess. Basically, if a waterway is impaired with regard to its beneficial uses, and I'm using these terms because these are the terms that are in the permit, it is supposed to be listed on the Clean Water Act 303D list. And then total maximum daily loads are supposed to be calculated, and that's your limit of what you can put into the water. But the waterways that our group discharges into are not on the 303D list. And yet, we have to comply with TMDLs that were designed for these waterways where there's no, that are not on the list. Another reason is litigation is pending. Compliance costs are remarkably excessive. Legislation has been proposed to limit how much can be spent for compliance. So for all these reasons, though, why would we be taxing now when these issues haven't even been settled? And our revised eWIMP group that, you know, Sierra Madre is a partnership with Arcadia, Duarte, and a couple other cities, we've revised it to reduce the cost dramatically. But logically, if this one is approved, then why not just take it a step further and do nothing at all and just use the stormwater conveyance channels that we already have to capture water that's already being captured? It's like logically, if you approve this, then we really, by the same logic, should be able to do nothing because the water's already captured. So I think this thing is just incredibly, phenomenally ridiculous. And I just hope that you, the voting public, would see it the same way and save your precious tax dollars for things that are going to benefit you. Okay, I officially step off of my soapbox.
So let's hear...
I do have a question for you and management analyst Carlson, for both of you perhaps. We, I mean, I totally hear where you're coming from. There's a lot of insanity with this whole MS4 permit issue, as we all know. But bottom line is, we are still potentially committed to a very... But bottom line is we are still potentially committed to a very, very high cost in the future, at least theoretically, in the twenty, thirty million dollar category, even higher. So explain to me why this would not help us in that situation, that worst-case situation. Would this not help us fund that if we have no other options?
It, it would help you fund it, but I'll, I'll let you...
Yeah, and, and before we get too deep, I do want to remind you that we are included in the pending litigation as a real party of interest, so some of my comments might have to be general.
Right.
Um, I did include in our report a possible alternative to a very complex and overly layered county effort, on the example of Culver City. If the council was to actually decide they wanted to raise some money for taxes for stormwater, I think it might be a better model, and it was included as something to keep an eye on. Other than that, like you say, despite all of Councilmember Capocha's correct arguments tonight, it is still the standing regulation. And unless you want to voluntarily get out of compliance or determine at some point that we can no longer afford compliance, uh, staff is going to recommend, recommend that we still keep going on this path. Keep an eye on this litigation, keep an eye on this legislation, but do it so from a perch of compliance while it's going on.
Questions?
I just had a question regarding the MS four permit and, um, other moving pieces. I know this litigation where we're named as a real party, but there are other pieces of litigation questioning the MS four permit in Southern California, if I'm correct. Yes?
Yes, I mean, and once the twenty-twelve permit came out, there were people that said it was too strict. There was entities that said it was too lax, okay? So that is all being worked out right now. There are also other jurisdictions where some judgments are being made. And there's a lot of people that are trying to consider how judgments in San Diego about this being an unfunded mandate might affect what we're going to be doing here in LA, because we've already started to working on the next generation of the permit, and that started very recently.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so I guess, um, you know, I think the staff report, Councilmember Capocha's comments, um, I think they're, they're very enlightening for us that haven't followed it as, as closely as Councilmember Capocha, and I guess my question probably gets to, you know, it's an ancillary question to Councilmember Goss's question, which is, putting aside whether we agree with the permit, I agree, I think the permit, um, is, is not very well-based and should hopefully go away. If we're stuck with it, what do you recommend we do? I, I'm okay, honestly, I don't think that whether we oppose this or not oppose this
Yeah.
um, is, uh, all that, you know, determinative of what's going to happen, you know? So my question is just really, what are the odds of trying to, let's say we do get a twenty million dollar bill over a certain amount of time? Do you think the Culver City model's better, or do you think it's...
Yes.
Yeah?
Uh, that, that's exactly what I think. I think that Cul- I think for our folks getting most of their dollars, because if you look at this, I mean, uh, how the costs are going to be allocated, it's, uh, fifty percent for regional projects, forty percent municipal, and ten percent overhead, basically, for the LA County. If we were to impose it or ask for a tax ourselves, then it would be directly for our costs and our responsibility here in Sierra Madre, and we wouldn't have to go through all this, uh, nosebleed and, uh, having, uh, other projects that maybe are, uh, higher ranked in, uh, the hierarchy of how they would approve projects, and we're still having to figure out how to fund our own compliance. So, you know, uh, under the best-case scenario, uh, we get some relief either legislatively or legally. Under a worst-case scenario, I'm hoping we can even improve further through the adaptive management that we can even reduce our costs less, and because, look, Sierra Madre is not contributing to the pollution load that's out there. I mean, you walk around the streets of LA and Vernon and other places, and you can see clearly where a lot of pollution is going to come off the streets in, in rain. So I would say just in a, uh, optimistic scenario, our costs should be less, and we then can ask our residents, if, if we're convinced that we need to pay that, to then say, come forth and, uh, help us with this.
Have we done any sort of analysis, you know, if we're paying a dollar out as residents here in Sierra Madre, how much will we, we would, you know, we would be getting back, what, less than a dollar, I assume?
Forty cents back.
Okay, so, because that's the ten...
We would also get a portion of that fifty percent regional to do, to, um, go towards the projects that are regional projects within our plan.
But didn't I read somewhere that the amount that we get is based on how many parcels are the impair- impair- I can't even say it.
Yeah. It is based on how much is paid in.
Right?
Yes.
So if we're, so it's, so if...
That is where some of the complexity gets in, because
Yeah.
uh, a hundred and ten percent of that payback has to go to the disadvantaged communities too, so the math does get very complicated.
So even though you say it's forty percent, really, we're not going to see that forty percent.
Forty cents, we would.
Okay.
The way I understand it, the fifty percent should be generally reasonably, um, equal to what, what each city is contributing.
So my question is, because we're running short on time, is we're not discussing whether or not we want the MS four permit. We, we're obligated to do that now. What you're asking, and what Councilmember Capocha is asking, is that we send a letter to the Board of Supervisors opposing this tax. If we agreed to do that, and the Board of Supervisors agrees that they, or they go ahead with their plan, what does that mean?
Well, we may be stepping it up with a resolution or something even a little bit more firmer. Uh, the council, it's up to the council's direction on how active they would want to publicize a for or an against with their own constituents. That's what I imagine.
But I'm saying, if they, if they go forward with it, and it goes on the ballot, and two-thirds of the population say yes, then we are still paying the parcel tax, even though we oppose it.
Right, we cannot opt out.
Okay, so basically, we're just giving a heads-up to the LA County Supervisors that we really don't think that Sierra Madre would benefit from this.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to take really quick public comment, and not from you.
Mayor Delmar, Mayor Protem, Hardedian, council members, city staff. I lived in Newport when this all started about twenty years ago. One of the things that you guys need to do that would get you out of some of the cost is to make, make sure, when there's an accident in this city, the tow companies clean up the mess. I got a feeling that ten percent cost factor in there is when they have to go out and clean it up, because the tow companies didn't clean it up. That includes fuel in the street. That means that you put absorbent on it, you sweep it back and forth, and get it off the pavement. Because that's part of that ten percent administrative fee, is the county has to have people go out into the, into the riverbeds, the washers, and clean it up. It can't, it can't go down into the ocean anymore. I saw the inception of this in Newport, in Huntington Beach, when I lived in Newport, and there were cities down there that faced the same problem. And it's a big problem, the cost, but I don't think you, you guys should bear the brunt of it. There's people closer than LA that are offenders, like Pasadena, Arcadia, Monrovia, and people need to get on them to say, hey, we're not going to pay your cost because you don't, you allow this stuff to stay there and not clean it up. You know, this is, I, I remember this starting down there, and what's ha- what started down there twenty years ago is now here, and the same problems exist. And everybody needs to be responsible. You can reduce your cost. Believe me, that ten percent can be released, reduced, and gotten out of there if you make sure that you're cleaning up all the stuff that goes in the storm. That includes accidents, that includes fuel spills, everything. If you do that, you may end up reducing the cost, and maybe getting out of the ten percent. I, I could see this happening from day one, twenty years ago, when it got up here. The fees were going to get out of hand. They, it took them a lot to get out of the fees in, in some areas. Some areas couldn't get out of it. But, you know, it's going to take time. You know, I, I'm glad you're, you're involved in litigation, because that may free you of some of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam City Clerk, did you get his name?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to come forward? No. Anybody else? Okay. We'll bring it back to council. What's your pleasure?
Just a quick question. Is, is there a reason, um, Councilmember Capocha recommending a resolution versus the approach of the COG in doing a letter?
Um, well, I could ask the COG. I mean, I will. I, you know, tend to ask the COG to not support it. Probably get outvoted on that, but I mean, I just wanted to just make a statement of our own town, really.
Okay.
Look, I, I think that, um, there's a lot of reasons not to support this from a kind of a process standpoint. I mean, if you read the staff report, I think that there's some real issues with representation of the committees, um, that they're going to be appointing, and I do think it's a little premature, given that obviously, cities, including us, are, are still, um, you know, battling the permit, if you will. So, um, you know, I'm fine sending, you know, supporting a resolution, uh, that, that goes against this. I think that we need to think, you know, just long and hard about, if we are stuck with this, what are we going to do? Because you did mention that, you know, one of the things we should be able to do is do this through our water rates, our water rate study, or, you know, I, legally, I don't think we can do that yet, right? I don't think that you can...
Well, no, I was just trying to make a point that if it's about water capture...
And do it through the water rate.
That'd be the way to do it, but this is not really for us in Sierra Madre or the San Gabriel Valley about water capture. The water's already being captured.
Right. And so, you know, look, I'm, I'll go along with it. You know, I think that the, the issue's going to be if we lose on the legal side, and this is the permit going forward, and we are stuck with a pretty big bill, are the odds better of riding together with the rest of the county to get that two-thirds vote or doing it here locally? And I think that's, uh, it's a toss-up. You know, I think that, I think it's going to be hard to get a two-thirds majority here, but, uh, or two-thirds supermajority, whatever it is, it's not...
It's going to be hard for the county.
It's going to be hard for the county, too. I think it's probably better odds for the county, but I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll see. Anyway.
I'll share that you are definitely compelling. You were, some good argument points, Councilmember Capocha. I, I think for me, my bigger concern is, is just about that it's not well thought out. It sounds that, that the way that it has been put forward, not only doesn't benefit us, takes away our local control, but even just looking at the arguments about technology, I also think don't make sense. So it, it almost seems that this is so premature, and I understand they need to find a way to, um, to fund this, but I don't think this is the right way. I think they just put it together, and it's kind of mishmashed. Would I consider it another way if they reconsidered how the money would come down, whether technology pieces were in place, and who really benefited? Possibly. Um, but the way that it's put together now, and your arguments, I would support a resolution against it.
Gosh, I wish I had something intelligent to offer, other than what you've said already, but I think you've all covered it perfectly well. I all support the resolution.
Um, I would just like to add my two cents. I do think that, um, after reading this, um, I agree with everybody. It's rather, not only is it complicated, but it's unfinished. It's almost like they had this really great idea, but we had to rush to meet the deadline. And there's just too many moving pieces in this. I, so I would, um, support the rest of the council in, in sending the letter or a resolution, and do you need a vote, or have we provided enough direction?
I think we have direction. As one point of clarification, I believe the counts, uh, the Board of Supervisors hears this on the seventeenth,
Yes.
which will be before the next council meeting, so we could send a letter stating the City Council does not support this, and say a resolution is forthcoming that council could adopt on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. I'm okay with that, you guys?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And I would like the letter to have everybody's name, all, all five council.
Great.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and, unless you guys have anything else, we'll go ahead and close the City Council meeting, and we'll take a very few-minute break while we invite our Board of Trustees folks up here, and then we'll get started with the library.
Need to officially close, or no?
Yeah, we do.
I move to adjourn our, our regular scheduled meeting.
No second.
Okay. Meeting adjourned for five minutes. Thank you.
...that invites them to browse, to sit and read, and to meet friends. Parents find a cheerful inviting children's room with overstuffed chairs designed for a parent and child to sit together and read. The room is designed for events where children can bond with parents as they learn to love reading and narrative storytelling. Patrons looking for other media, movies, music, books on disc, digital books, et cetera, can find what they're looking for thanks to intuitive wayfinding, easy access, and the friendliest, most helpful staff anywhere. Community groups can now meet in comfortable, friendly, dedicated spaces that are used just about every night. In fact, on a given night, book lovers can read in peace and quiet, children and parents can share a hands-on learning event involving Lego bricks and robotic hardware, and the civic club can meet to plan their next summer concert in the park that's over 100 people enjoying the library at the same time without disturbing one another. This new library is flexible and agile. Spaces are designed to transform as community needs change and technologies evolve. Patrons know that this library will be a community asset long into the future because it's always changing, always addressing community needs. Now that it's the pride of Sierra Madre, almost no one remembers why some people opposed it. It's such an asset, and it's an asset because it was designed and built to address what never changes in a community like ours. People will always love stories, and this is the best place to find the newest, best, most exciting stories in every possible medium and format. People will always need people. We are social animals. This is the best place in the city to come together with others to meet this great, to make this great city even better. People will always want the best for their children. This library sends the message the city cares about kids with so many books, events, and programs to nurture their passion for fun and learning. And finally, people will always want to leave behind something magnificent for future generations. The people who worked to get this library built and opened will leave a joyous legacy of community pride that will stand for 60 years or more. Alexander Herzen, the 19th century Russian writer, said, quote, "You can awaken people only by dreaming their dreams more clearly than they dream them themselves." Now is the time to dream the new game-changing Sierra Madre Public Library into existence. Let's create a vision so vivid, so engaging, and so desirable that it can't not be built. This dream can become our legacy that will serve the community far beyond 2028, all the way to 2078. Now I'd like to sort of build on that and talk about the trustee preference, given the options around the table. The four options that we were discussing were fix the existing library, which would cause us to lose 22% of our collection. This is sort of the duct tape and super glue option. Fix the existing library and adding meeting rooms. Creating what's called a modest new library project, that is, something that would, basically it was the vision I described, that would be able to work within current staffing needs. We would not be adding more staff to the budget. And finally, the ambitious new library. This would be a bigger place, bigger staff. This is the bells whistled and on-staff barista option. So, we, our preference was creating what we call the modest new library. And why? And the answer is, this has all the virtues of the old library with none of the problems. It's ADA compliant, earthquake safe, comfortable, well-lit, and friendly. It will be designed to be staffed by roughly the same number of people who staff the library today, no problematic burden on future city budget. It will delight all groups it serves today, patrons, children, families, in dedicated spaces so these groups don't collide with each other on any given night. Unlike fixing and expanding the present library, this new library can serve the community for six decades. No more duct tape and super glue. And finally, community pride. A lot of cities talk the talk of commitment to community, but this will show the world that Sierra Madre walks the walk. Every Sierra Madre resident can show off this new library and say, "I helped build this place. We did this together. This is what makes our little village such a great place to live. This is why I love Sierra Madre."
Thank you. Very nice. Any, uh, any questions regarding their vision and their preference?
I do have a question. The modest new library, are we gonna get, you're gonna, at some point during the meeting, we're going to get details about what that is?
Yes.
Yes.
And just another question, just a little bit more, because the history here, and we've had those presentations of, for the last, what, since 70, in the 70s when it was first proposed to upgrade our library and expand it, and we've had several times we've done this. This is where I have a little bit of trouble with the survey showing one thing, that it appears that the community would not be willing to spend the money for that, but yet it keep, it's been consistently coming back and rejected for one reason or another, and costs were always a consideration. I know previous councils did not want to go and ask people to pay more in taxes. What is, what is different about now, that now is the time to do this, other than the building is getting progressively more decrepit? I mean, we have to do something, but why would you, why do you feel that this is the right time to do this as opposed to the past? I mean, have you thought about that, or, you know, and again, I'm trying to reconcile why the, the survey is telling us that residents may not be amenable to paying a tax, and you're coming up with a vision of why they should?
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd like to speak to that just a little bit. 10 years ago, when we did this, we did an awful lot of public educational forums, so to speak. They were done here, they went done in people's homes where they invited their neighbors, and we made a case for the library and having a new library. At that time, people were willing to pay a parcel tax. And at that time, because it was $6.5 million, it was going to be approximately $10, $12 per month, per parcel. So, the education, I think you have to get out there, and you have to let people know what you're going to give them, what they're going to realize from this kind of investment in the community. And we had, you know, architectural drawings and all that kind of thing. And you have to also, there has to be an emotional component, component to this. It's not just a building. They don't give to bricks and mortar. People give to needs, and you have to, you have to bring these needs forward. What, what is it, does, what does it, how does it impact the community? How does it benefit children? How can we enhance programs? And this is what people give to. And so, that's the approach we took at that time. And I don't think that that has ever failed, whether you're raising money for a library, a hospital, a YMCA. It's always the same component. And once you get that out there, and once you get the people to feel emotionally involved, then it's very, it's, then the, the money, the money then comes, because the emotion is there and they want to see this wonderful project.
So you feel you can overcome what the survey is telling?
Well, I, you know, I, I think we can. I really think we can, because we're not really asking for that much. I, I don't know what it was, I, Gabe can answer this, on, on the, was it the eight or nine million dollar project, Gabe?
Yeah, we have costs broken down in later slides, so depending on the total cost with fundraising, we've determined what it would be per month, per parcel.
And what was that about, do you think? I'm sorry, I should, I know that I've seen it, but I don't remember.
For the 10-year bond, it was $32 a month.
For 10 years?
And for 20 a year, it was $22 a month.
So where the monthly parcel cost, and we'll go in more in depth, is 2024 per parcel per month for a 30-year bond at the full cost of the modest rebuild. With fundraising or a library foundation, it was 1620 per parcel per month, as estimated, with lots of variables that could change.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's the reason I think we feel like now is the time, because we've been trying to do this for 30 years or something.
I think we all agree we need to do something.
Yeah. So you, you went with the modest instead of the, the big dream. Is it because of the cost factor, or do you think that because we can preserve so much of what we have? What was the, what turned you to go to the modest instead of the big dreamy worm?
Well, I think the modest was a new building.
It was, yeah.
It's a new building, and that, that building would have to be raised. And then, it would be a new building, and I think the cost was like 8.9 million, say you round it off to about $9 million.
Yeah, it's about 4,000, 4,500 square feet less than the, the dream build.
Right. For me, the reason, the difference was, the dream building would require more staffing. And we thought, well, it's one thing to, you know, it's a huge ask to ask the, to ask citizens to pay for this thing, and then we're asking them on a permanent basis to add another X amount to the budget as well. So if we're clever, we can design this to work within the staffing parameters we have now. And that's, I'd say that'd be less, that'd be more likely to win support.
Mayor, just to address that point, the only option we feel will not need additional staff is the minimal investment, selling the backlot. We've, we've built in to any new building at different levels, both costs, depreciation for life cycle of new assets, but it, it's also when you're talking about 75 to 125% square footage increase, even though you can minimize some of the design, we are anticipating needing more staff to operate it than we have today. And when we put the cost in for the staff, we're not taking into account inflation or anything like that. So we put a straight number in, and it's not, it hasn't been calculated scientifically. We're, we're making our best estimate based on what we know about the size of the library, how much we think it's going to cost to operate, but also recognizing larger building will have more items to maintain more frequently. So we can get creative and probably reduce some of the costs that are in there, but staff will be proposing to include in any parcel tax if that's the direction both bodies decide to go. There, we feel there has to be funding for both adequate maintenance as well as adequate staffing.
And we'll get to funding item number four, correct?
So, can I just, first of all, I, I want to respectfully challenge what Gabe's saying just, just a bit, and that is, I work in the business of doing these things. We built the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library. State of Illinois told us they wanted a certain number of people for staffing, because that's the number of people you have for the number of square feet we're going to do. My boss said, I looked at the incentives that were built into the presidential library, which is, the state of Illinois is going to take all of the profits for themselves and put nothing back into the project. And he said, here's what's going to happen. We're going to get more people than they think we're going to get. Maintenance costs are going to be high, and they're going to start cutting staffing in the second or third year. We have to design this place so that it can run successfully, robustly, on exactly half the staffing that they're going to give us. So that's how we designed it. And guess what? All those things came true. Today, the library runs robustly and successfully on exactly half of the staffing because of the way we designed it. We designed the shows to be run automatically. You push a button, the show starts, there's, there's no staff that runs the shows. I can give you six ways we did that. But part of the way we think about this is that you can design things to, so, so that those costs are, are kept, are, are kept low. So you can't make assumptions, you know, we can, we can maybe tweak the assumptions.
And trustee Zip, you had a comment?
Yes. The least expensive option also had a fault in it, and that was that we would take different venues and have events at those sites. The problem, again, deals with staffing. If you take one or two people out of the library, who's going to be in the library to have the library function successfully? So it, it sounds good, but it really wouldn't work in a, in a way that would enhance the programs that we're trying to provide.
And what is the opposition to the second option, where we maintain, maybe expand our current library? What was your opposition to that?
I would say that, when we discussed it, our position was, I don't know if you want to get into cost now, but basically, you should, I guess, the, if, if we fix the library we've got and expand it for mini-space, that's going to cost the city about $6 million. You get the whole new library, it's going to be eight-plus million dollars. One gives you 20 to 30 years of use, one gives you 60 years of use. In the long term, it makes more sense to build a new library that is robust, meets every state, everything, and is energy efficient.
More space efficient, I imagine, too.
And so, can I, I'll ask a few questions on the, that option, the modest, you know, raise and rebuild. Would that include the backlot? So we're not selling off the backlot to pay for any of it? It would, it would actually be utilizing the backlot?
I think that could be decided at a later date.
And then, you know, I think that this vision is probably, it's tough. You know, the, we always knew that the survey was going to be a double-edged sword. We knew that it was an empirical data point that we were going to have to live with, or now somewhat explain away, depending on the way it came. So I think that your guys' vision with this new library is probably held by, I would say, the majority of people in town, and I would say that it's probably not even a tough sell. I think what's tough is this idea that somehow our current library, in its size and function, somehow isn't actually sufficing. Because I, I'll tell you, the people who don't want to do this are the ones that tell me, prove to me that the current space and the current collection and the current children's room isn't sufficient. I said, "Well, I can't really prove that to you. I mean, you're going to have to go in there and make your own assessment." I mean, I go in there and I use the children's room mostly, and I really like to-
But you bring your son, right?
I go in. That's the second time she's been in.
One of your great ones, especially YA stuff, you know, it's pretty great stuff for adults.
Yes, and I bring my son, and the children's room is fantastic. So I have no complaints about the children's room. And so I think that the big thing on your vision is taking a step back, you know, people voted, the survey is what it is. Why do we think, and it kind of gets to councilor Kepoche's point, why do we think, you know, we're going to be able to go out there and drum up the support, when I think we really haven't answered that first question, which is capacity? You know, do we need more capacity? You know, if you build it, they will come. You know, have we answered that? Have we answered that question? Which is, you know, if we spend $8 million, they will come, and they're going to utilize it.
Right.
Well, and I think, I think the community has demonstrated that they have a passion, even if it's just to keep it as is and they don't want anything to change. I think there's a lot of interest in the library. But to make our ADA updates, earthquake safe, all of these things, we're going to lose possibly even a third of the collection. They want more. They don't want to lose. So if we start demonstrating, I think what will happen, just to make things safe, a safe environment for their children, for each of them, they're going to see how they're going to start losing these things that they desperately love. And I think all of us collectively, the community, our volunteers, the board, the friends, the city council, there's been a big effort with the UUT, other public forums, we've had a lot of information going out to the public, and that's what's bringing back all this good feedback. So in my opinion, I think it's a really great opportunity, if we can come together collectively, to keep pushing forward.
And may I make a comment as to the children's library? The children's library was renewed, I think, probably-
Rotary 2012, yeah.
It was about, yeah, yeah. And we did a campaign for that.
Right.
And so that's how that became more wonderful.
Yeah.
More wonderful. We did a campaign for that, and we raised $85,000 without a whole lot of problem.
Yeah. No, and I guess that my point is, it's hard for me to believe, and maybe that's just how the numbers shake out, that if we totally gutted and re-remodeled the inside of our library to be ADA compliant and to be up to date, that it's going to cost that, you know, that it costs $6 million. I mean, and so I think that that's-
That's if we add a whole new wing.
That's with a new wing. Okay, so I guess my question is, if we were to go in, completely gut it, keep the children's rooms relatively, you know, it's newer, remodeled, but let's say we go in there, we, we do everything we need to do, what's the price tag on that, keeping our current footprint? Because I think that is the, quite frankly, that's the counterargument that you're going to have to address, which is, what's the price tag on going in, don't duct tape and Scotch tape, just redo it all, and redo it all 21st century? What's that price tag?
Price tag to come in to compliance with all the ADA deficiencies and everything else.
And make it nice. I mean, you're not, you know, it's not, yeah.
That was 1.4 million. However, staff is pretty skeptical that we could make the basement effectively ADA compliant. So when you look at the library today, at 8,000 square feet, the basement is probably 2,000 square feet of that. So the 1.4 million, we probably could make it nicer, 21st century, for an increase in the 1.4 million, that wouldn't be too much. But I think we'd probably have to accept making the basement fully ADA compliant and usable. It's probably not likely under this plan.
Yeah. And I guess that's where I am right now. You know, I, I think the vision is compelling, and the way you lay it out is compelling. I think you, you can probably get a lot of support if you can answer that question, which is, to me, why, whatever the number is, 1.4, 1.6, 2 million, why isn't that sufficient for us? Why isn't that sufficient for the, for the taxpayers especially, who, I think under that plan, you probably wouldn't even need a parcel tax. I mean, you'd probably sell the backlot and pay for it. So I think that's really, to me, where I see the rub, you know, and I think that, that's why we're having this, this conversation.
Yeah, but, I mean, what I heard and what my understanding is that we're going to lose space, though, just like he says about that.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
So the library then shrinks.
It does shrink, it does.
Programs move from the library, and we've heard also, you've expressed some skepticism of whether we can maintain cost, because now you're pulling people out of the library staff to go do something at a different location.
Oh, which is a good point.
Yeah, and so that, that's, that's what I heard loud and clear, is that just doing the basic, selling the lot and fixing the library is actually taking away from our library.
Yeah.
Well, in listening to trustee Proctor's vision, he laid out in our minds things that could be done that we can't do now, because there'd be more space. And I feel like that's something that's a significant issue in this city. We have a lot of volunteer groups, and right now, we have very limited means to accommodate them. And they're able to do it, I mean, they're able to muddle through and do a wonderful job, but I feel like that's something that this, this offers. I think if you take a look at our historical archives, I think we could use a lot more space, a lot more capability there. There's a lot of interest in that here in this town, particularly with our concerns about preservation, and I feel like that would give us, we'd, we'd have more capability. I think if you really take a look at what we have to do for our teens, I don't really think there's a whole lot of space for teens in our current library. That, that is a market segment that exists, that we're underserving, in my view, and I feel like this new library would offer a considerable amount of capability in that direction. Every, every, every little piece that he talked about is actually something that we are struggling with now. And so I, I don't know if it's, if it's self-evident to anybody who's new to this discussion. I think these are things that need to be laid out in very great specificity, and I think sold, frankly, in a very, in a very careful and a very respectful manner to the public. They need to understand exactly how these things fall.
I agree. I mean, I, I would say that, you know, what I just described wasn't on the questionnaire. People weren't able to vote for that, you know, and as I said before, you know, a price tag without a vision is always too much. I mean, if, if, if that had been, if you had presented that in its fullest form, it'd be interesting to see what people, how people would have responded.
We would have needed to have it open up and then hear Rich Proctor.
Audio.
I'll go, I'll go house to house, okay?
Can we get, and can we circle back to trustee King's point, and councilman Kepoche has made it again? If we do revamp the current building, we're losing collection, we're losing program. Can you just, can we explain that better and?
I think we have some library experts there. Come on up.
I think that's a really good point. If we, if, if doing the revamp of the current building makes it to where we lose collection and services, I think it's, it needs to be explained why.
Yes, we've, we've had an estimate from one of our furnishing and sort of interior space companies that we use, and it seems that if we, if we're to have the ADA compliant shelving and make it look nice and not as cluttered, we would lose a third of our adult book collection, and in order to accommodate the books that we do have already, it would require, you know, 1,500 extra square footage. So that's an estimate that we have from them.
1,500?
And the other point I wanted to make was about the programming. I mean, we have people that have been asking recently, when are the youth not going to meet, so that we can come? Because they, the, the youth, of course, are a little noisy, and they're not allowed in the basement anymore. So we're having to share the time between different groups at the moment.
Are the youth programs that are going on, is that what it is? Or they just come and hang out?
Yes, it's, any, any program we have takes over the main library.
Okay.
And all, what we really would, to help thus, the needs of the community, and they're always asking, is to have a room that we can have programs in, just a meeting room and quiet study areas. Space is the one thing that has really, is inhibiting our programming and our-
I'm just going to, councilmember Arizmandi, if you have any comments before I open it up to public comment?
No, I, well, I had a question, and, and I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if this is being discussed with the staff, but in terms of time, I'm just thinking, with these different four options that the trustees evaluated, do we have an idea how much staff time and resources we're looking at? And I imagine it's, I don't know, is it about the same for all the options? It'll take about the same amount of time? Are we thinking it might take more time with more complex or expansion of, of project?
In general, the more complex the plan, the more complex the funding source, the more staff time that would be necessary, but we have, we can make staff time available for any direction the council chooses.
Thanks.
Did you have a comment?
I, I would just call your attention to page 21 of the library facility master plan from 2017. It showcases a lot of the questions that you're talking about, the actual physical, physical photos of difficulties that we have, and some of the things that are being discussed as far as programming, we, we make the library even more out of compliance ADA-wise, and that's why we have those programs before we open.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One last thing, and then I need to open up to public comment.
Oh, am I public? Okay.
No, you're not public. So do you have something that you want to say?
Yeah, I, and, and maybe it's already cleared everyone, the reason that there's a loss in, in book space is because ADA, we're now at 36 inches, and they require 46 inches on all the, so we lose a bunch, you know, we lose several whole lines of, of bookcases. The bookcases we have now are full of splinters, and so be careful when you take a book off.
Well, we appreciate that little tidbit there. I am going to open up right now for public comment. I think we, we've pretty much gone through the vision, and we've talked about the options. And before we go into our funding options, I would like to hear from the public, if anybody has a comment.
Hi, Joan McGuire, San Gabriel Court. Yeah, the library is just the most amazing space, and it's tiny. On the Monday mornings with the kids' programs, the little kids, and they're being read to, they are given games, they are being socialized, they even have a cleanup song. It's absolutely crammed. There's very little room for, to accommodate the kids that are there and the parents who sit around. It's, it's really crammed. And it's wonderful, and it happens before the library opens. Other children's programs that I've seen, or the, even the Lego night and the VR night and all that stuff, because of the way the library is configured, it's noisy. You're going to hear the kids in the young adult room, and maybe to a certain extent in the adult room. Even when they're not being very noisy, there are adults who study every night. being very noisy, there are adults who study every night. There aren't a lot of places for them to do that. And I can attest to the fact that the basement is, well, to call it non-ADA compliant would be mild. It's kind of, you don't want to be in there if there's an earthquake. Things are old. Some things, I won't say they're falling apart, but it really is spit and baling wire. We can do better. And while I would like to see the pie in the sky, brand new building, because I'm funny that way, and I'd love to see it L E E D and built for 100 years, but hey, at least a modest new building would be far preferable. We would, we would be able to have all of the programs, quiet spaces. It would just be more user friendly. And I know there are adults out there, and I used to be one of them before I started using the library, who say there's nothing for adults. And there are programs for adults. There are, I think there's a monthly adult art stuff and they would like to have more. I mean, why should we not be able to offer that? Those kind of things run themselves. It doesn't take that much staffing. But we've got to have a place to do it. And we don't have to be Monrovia Library and we don't have to be Arcadia Library. I don't think we have to be huge to be efficient, effective, welcoming, friendly, safe, dare I say, in all manners. I really do think a rebuild is the way to go. A million dollars sounds like a lot of money if it comes to you, but for a building, it's nothing. And to keep pasting this poor beloved place back together, it's penny wise and very much pound foolish. It just is, I'm sorry, it's absurd. We deserve better as a city and we should do better as a city and our voters should do better as a city. We can. And I do think that selling it as to what do you really want and the vision, that was wonderful. Thank you, Rich. I think that has to be thrown in there. You've got to give people something to dream about and I dream about it a lot. So I hope that we do have a new building. And if we do, it's gonna be wonderful. So that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody else who would like to come and address?
I'm Charlie Fry and I'm on Ramona Avenue. And I'm not sure if this is the right moment, but since trustee Proctor brought up the funding of the new library, that's something that's very concerning to me. And I just wanted to mention that the, with all due respect, the Abraham Lincoln Library is really an archive and it's, you know, connected to a museum and it has lots of different operating functions that operate differently than a community public library. So as far as funding goes, if there is no kind of consideration of increased funding for the new library, no matter what you do to the new library, whether you redo it or you build a brand new one, the current operating, you know, the current library is not open on Sundays. My understanding is it's not gonna be open on Fridays. It currently does not have a children's librarian. So my question to the group would be, whatever you do with the new library, if you're gonna keep the funding the same, does that mean it's not gonna be open Sunday? It's not gonna be open Friday? There's gonna be no children's librarian?
Good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Emmett McGuire and I'm gonna take a counter tack here. I have a, one of those signs in my front yard, Hart Sierra Madre Library. And after the survey results came in, I was going to append it and say, Hart my library, and a little sign underneath that says, like the building. Love the library, like the building. But I think that would fly in the face of what I see in this city. When you talk about raising the building, I think you're playing with fire. I think people love that place. That's what I've seen the conversation be, both on the streets and in the survey. And whether we like it or not, I think that's where the emotional commitment is. And it's not to any new building. And without an emotional commitment, none of these plans are gonna fly. And regarding 10 years ago, as I remember, that didn't fly. So whatever will was there was not sufficient. And it seems to me from the survey, it's not sufficient now. In the absence of, of really dedicated outreach and enrollment and education program, it's not gonna fly. What I see over, I've been here 33 years now, and I see a very committed small group, like the people in this room right now, that do not really represent the will of the city. Someone joked earlier, we want a lot of stuff and we don't want to pay for it. And I think that's the will of the city. So I like your vision and I'd love to see it, but I'm not committed to that building and I think a lot of people are. So I think we have to get into real politic and see what people are willing to do and what we can perhaps move them to do. Because in the absence of that, I think all these plans are not gonna go anywhere. I'm sorry to be the wet blanket, but I was shocked by the results of the survey. Bill Patzard spoke at a previous meeting and enrolled me totally in the property, property tax. It was like, I went in not thinking about it and it came out, yeah, let's do that. And I'm still in favor of that. I'd support a partial tax, a property tax, anything, yeah. And I think I'm in the radical minority. So I have no happy conclusion to these comments.
Think of something.
Could be wrong. Two peanuts walk into a bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the Board of Trustees and City Council?
Good evening, Toni Buckner. I guess this is, feels so familiar unfortunately. What I, I do want to say is I agree with councilmember Harabedian. That is the question. And I can tell you the answer. That building is totally inadequate. We've fought this battle too long. It's been over and over again. And yes, there, people don't want to pay taxes. When I started, it was right after Prop 13 and, and things were just, you know, downhill. I was very fortunate. I didn't lose my job and I was grateful for that. But the building and the rebuilding of city staff has been going on since then. I think all cities have, have dealt with that. The city of Sierra Madre is a small tax base. It's a bedroom community. It's just one of the most beautiful places to live and we all love it. And we deserve to invest in the library. The library isn't a building. It is a service and it is a commitment to the community. It is a commitment to the history. It's the commitment to the children, our future, the seniors. It serves everybody. So we've really got to stop this dance because my stomach can't handle this anymore. It's, it's really time to make the commitment. The, I appreciate the Board of Trustees looking at the, one of the things that came up is the fact that they addressed the issue of the staffing. The staffing level really only would go up very high numbers when we had grants. And then slowly, you know, year after year, then we'd lose those wonderful people and sometimes at the grants at the end earlier. So it's a reasonable target. It's, it's consistent. But the building, it's just not sufficient anymore. It's not safe. It's not serving the community. And yes, there will be emotion to it, but it's not worth saving. That's my personal opinion. I'd say pretty well informed too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who would like to address? Hi, good evening.
Good evening, council, library board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here for three minutes. My name's Gary Hood. I live on Baldwin. Well, I just don't know where to start, but I think everyone on the council and the library board has received the 27-page report that I did a, did a study on. And for the library board, eight pages with over 30 sources of funding a new library. And I will say, I am not offended by those who have not returned my phone call or my emails. Not a problem. So from there, I recently want to thank our city manager, Gabe, who pointed out that with a grandiose type of style for a library, it's gonna need people to work and staff the library. Went home, did some more research. In New York, they have a museum there and they have robots that not only direct people, give classes to people, but handle security. Looked up that robot. That robot's $1,700. And it does all of that. So I, I thank you, city manager, for bringing that to my attention. And another thing, in my survey, cert, research, March of 2016, a six-year survey was finished that showed in the United States, over 350 libraries have closed. Libraries are not like they used to be for the hub where we can take our children and sit there and enjoy the books and read. With 2016, they had a 42% usage of the library. And I forget the date, but after their survey was done, there was only 37% of the people that were attending the libraries. And we know all the reasons why. I got excited about the library because I think that the library can and should be the hub of our community. And I don't know how many of you have read that 27-page report and read those eight pages of funding, but we can have the best library anywhere around at no cost almost. The state of California will pay us money if we can reclaim our water. And if you guys read the report, you can see where there's funding for solar power, geothermal. We can totally be disconnected from the water of the city if it's done right. There are so many options. And I would hope that after you hear me talking tonight, you may go home and look at that report. I would be happy to do some more information, get some more information so that you can see we could have the best library anywhere. There wasn't anything in that report that wasn't existing today. There was nothing futuristic there. A virtual reality room is a reality. McDonald's is doing it up north. I'm getting older. I'm gonna have great-grandkids pretty soon. I would love to go to the library and see a virtual reality room and sit there with my great-grandchildren and experience the Alps, especially a cold winter in the Alps in July would be really nice. With the geothermal and climatic control, you can have the humidity, you can have the temperature and you can have the smell of all these places around the world. There's no reason why we can't have a library that everybody would want to come and visit. I know the city, we're not allowed to make a profit, but we can surely cover the expenses. And I'm sure that people will, given the opportunity, can sit on the beach, go to the forest or go to the Alps and be in a virtual reality room. I can't imagine them not wanting to help pay for the cost. I'm trying, I didn't bring any notes because I did that report for you. And I think our next item is funding. That's the next thing that we're gonna be discussing. And I think if you look at those eight pages that I did to show you where the funding is, we don't have to have a property tax, more taxes to pay for a library. If we get together with the community, we have Caltech and JPL and lots of places of education around here that is in that report, that I'm sure we can get committees going and seek funding to do the most outrageous library that a little town could have. I'm open for any questions you have. And again, I would like to think that maybe you'll go home and read that report that I put together because we can have the best library anywhere around. I truly believe that. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I'll bring it back. Oh, one more? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Bill Patzard. I lived over here on Mariposa for 31 years. And of course, I'm the biggest proponent of a new library. I love libraries. All right. Now, as we went about this whole process, we made a couple of mistakes. I, I think the survey was unfortunately worded. All right? Unfortunately worded. All right? And so we came back with sort of an ambiguous set of answers to, you know, on the one hand, people want the library. On the other hand, nobody wants to pay for a library. All right? So that's, the motto of Sierra Madre is, don't raise my taxes. And I understand that. All right? I don't like to pay federal taxes, state taxes, county taxes, mostly because I don't trust them, you know? And most of it's just pork, you know? But I like to pay local taxes. All right? And I think that the amount of money that we're talking about here is, I, I did a little study on the internet. And they are building libraries, by the way, all across the United States. And really creative libraries, from small libraries to big libraries. I did a little algorithm. It's about a million dollars for 1,000 feet, square feet. All right? So if you did 12,000 square feet compared to the present 8,000, it would be about 12 million dollars. All right? That means, you know, we could enlarge the present library, which actually, and many people have pointed it out, the present library is really small. And if it's gonna be ADA compliant, it's gonna be even smaller. All right? So the other thing is, is that nobody really has visualized what this thing looks like, this great new library. There's not even a rough drawing anywhere. There's just a lot of talk and hand waving, you know? Is it gonna be two stories? Is it gonna be three stories? Are we gonna move it into the back parking lot? Are we gonna use that piece of dirt on Mariposa and that's gonna be the new parking lot? So nobody really knows what this thing looks like. And so, and then we sent out, like I said, that ambiguous questionnaire. Now, having said all that, you're the city council. We elected you. All right? Every once in a while, you get to do something a little out of the ordinary. All right? You actually have an opportunity here to leave a little legacy in Sierra Madre. When's the last time we did a little legacy in Sierra Madre? We built something really special for the kids, for the seniors, all right, and the betweeners. All right? This is the 21st century. This is the 21st century. We're going to be having, you know, there's going to be a lot, the new library is going to, you know, the present library is becoming more digital, all right? There's more working parents, you know, kids have someplace to go after school. Seniors have to use the Internet, all right? They have to learn how to use the Internet. And so after it's all said and done, okay, the questionnaire wasn't so great, nobody knows what this thing's looks like, but it could be. I've seen some fantastic, go on the Internet and look under new libraries. They're really amazing, from really the small libraries to huge libraries. But after it's all said and done, we elected you, all right? In spite of what the survey said, all right? You could sit down and do something a little out of the ordinary here and come up with a $12 million parcel tax. Not everybody would love you, but, you know, they'd remember you 60 years from now.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else?
They'd remember you.
Very quickly.
I forgot one item, because I attended the Kiwanis and the Library Board and the Friends of the Library, and I was surprised to find out that the Friends of the Library had about $1 million in their coffers, and they were giving $50,000 a year to the library. And if anybody who knows me, safety has always been my career. And the fact that we have allowed our children to go in a library that isn't ADA compliant and isn't earthquake safe, I think we're negligent there. These things should have been taken care of years ago. And then to find out that we had $1 million, and I looked up the mission for the Friends of the Library, and part of it was for keeping the library in repair. And if anybody's ever wanted to know what the mission of the Friends of the Library is, it is on the Internet, and it has, they haven't been keeping the library as safe as it should have been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here comes our Friends of the Library.
Okay. Well, Margaret Quigley, Chair President of the Friends of the Library. With all due respect, we don't have $1 million. We have maybe 600 right now that, we have money that's tied up that can't be spent for certain things that we're managing, but we do have $600,000. We do give $55,000 a year to the library for its budget, for things that it wouldn't have otherwise on an annual basis. We give money for any requests that the library has for extra things that they can use. All the money that we give to the library is upon request. And it's not where there is a support for the library. We will give money to the library when and if we, whatever we do in the future, that we do have saved money to do that, and we will do it. But we can't just say, "This is what the library needs, and here you do this." That's the job of the trustees and the city. I think you all understand that, but I need the people in the audience, or anybody on TV or wherever, to understand that, that that's how we work. And we'll be happy to fundraise for more when and if we get to that point. We'll be right there. And we'd love to have $1 million right now to do this, and we probably could have $1 million if we, if we get to that point where we're actively fundraising for something. I think that would not be easy to do, but it's doable. And anyway, I don't think I have anything else more to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
I'm going to bring it back. So, you know, looking at what we've discussed already and gone through, I'm going to propose that we do talk about the funding options. And along with the funding options, I think it's very important that we talk about a timetable, because I've heard a couple people talk about our ADA, that the library's not safe. And then I see that we're going to do a new construction in 2020. What do we do in those two years? So what I would like to do is go ahead, if we could, I have a feeling that the number one option is not really favored by anybody, right?
Number one was what again?
Minimal investment.
Well, I'd still like to learn is the minimal investment, where would the funding come from?
Well, according to this, it would be the sale of the back lot and fundraising. No bond or parcel tax.
Mayor, we could likely put items, just take items three and four together and run through them pretty quickly as they're related, if you would like.
That would be fine. And then we have the modest library rebuild that was raising the building. The one that I'm not seeing is the meaningful improvement for 3.7, which I don't see that.
Would you like us to turn on the PowerPoint, Mayor?
Yeah. Can we do that?
And at your direction, we'll move through three and four PowerPoint together.
Okay.
So we did not name these options. They came from the various studies or proposals. The option one, the minimal investment, 1.4 million, came from the 2017 master plan. Meaningful improvement, Mayor, the one you're referring to, also came from the 2017 master plan. It was a 5,000-square-foot addition, $3.7 million. We did, when we're doing the appraisal, we actually kind of have competing reports where they said that the 5,000-square-foot addition off the back was not feasible for a variety of reasons, which is when we started talking about potentially shifting an addition up front of, not two stories, not 5,000 square feet, but the cost may be about similar. But we did not include that because we don't, we just don't have enough information at that time, or at this time.
But is it still a viable option?
We don't think a two-story addition off the back is a viable option.
But what about moving in front?
Moving in the front, we think is a viable option.
Okay.
Three was the modest library rebuild. This was the Board of Trustees from, I believe, that was from a 1996 report that Mr. Spears has updated. Fully outfitted new building came from the Joe Matthews report, and that's estimated to be 11.1 million. As we move through them, the minimal investment option addresses all the issues in the master plan. When we say it does not use the adjacent lot, it means it's not part of the library build, so it could be sold. Potential funding would be sale of back lot, fundraising, would not likely require a bond or parcel tax. Timeline would be immediate. When we talk about timelines, very, very tentative. So we're talking years for the other options. The modest library rebuild, the 8.9 million, would raise the current building, replace it with a 14,000-square-foot structure, also address all of the needs identified in the library master plan. The adjacent lot may or may not be used in construction. I think it's likely that it would be used, but until we have some type of architectural drawings, I don't want to say that it's 100%. Potential fundraising, our funding is fundraising, bond, parcel tax, sale of back lot may not be possible, so we may not be able to count on funding for that. Timeline is likely 2020 or later, trying to put everything together, including going to the voters for a parcel tax. The fully outfitted new building from the Joe Matthews report, which I believe is your first attachment tonight, also raises the new building. This is a two-story, 18,500-square-foot structure, obviously also addresses all the needs in the master plan. The adjacent lot will certainly be used in the construction and would not be available for sale. Potential funding remains the same, fundraising, bond, parcel tax, sale of back lot again is not possible. Again, timeline will be 2020 or later. That's when we anticipate we'd be able to get it in front of the voters. We look at funding options for number one. This was the no-tax option. We did note, in unfortunately funny way, that the current library at market value is worth negative $500,000. The property is worth more if it's scraped when you put them together. But for the purpose of this exercise, the vacant parcel is your third option, at appraised at 1.45 million. And highest and best use was condos on that site. They said apartments may also be reasonable, but the highest and best use would be condos. This is going to get a little harder to see, and we're stressing the example only here. We don't know what's going to be going on two years from now, so we've made educated guesses on interest rates and bond costs. A 5,000-square-foot addition, again, at 3.7 million, when we talk about 30 years at 5%, we don't believe this would add any new staffing options. The total cost per parcel would be $1,958, which breaks down to a monthly cost per parcel of $544. The modest library rebuild at 8.9 million, again, over 30 years, would be 2024 per month per parcel. This is assuming annual operation increase of around $300,000. How that number-
Twenty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty.
How that option was derived was minimal staffing increase. I think we put one position or one and a half positions in. The majority of it was to pay for the new items and the depreciation of the assets that go in them. One of the ideas that the Library Board trustees mentioned is, with the new building, library foundation may be able to take on funding of something like technology, for example. If that's the case, then some of the annual operational increase could be reduced. We do not see a way as staff that we can fund a significantly larger building, a new building, without adding operating costs. The fully outfitted rebuild at 11.2 million, over 30 years, came in at 2606 per parcel. And I know Patricia Hall is going to talk about fundraising in a moment. What we are assuming, based on the information that the Library Board gave us and talked about, is the funds needed for a modest rebuild is more likely close to 6 million after additional funding sources are identified, including the Library Board Foundation, fundraising, potential assistance from the community groups that we already have. Our best guess is 1620 per parcel per month, and the fully outfitted building, running under the same assumptions, would be 2258 per parcel per month. Again, these are, these are estimates. Costs could go down, they could go up. There's going to be a lot of changes between now and when this would actually take place. But the idea tonight was if Council and the Board of Trustees came to consensus on a direction, we could really drill down on one of the options, one of the four options that are feasible here, and bring it back at another joint meeting to talk about architectural drawings and all of the other fun stuff that goes along with really getting more information on the direction. So on the parcel tax, I'm actually going to ask Terry if anyone has questions on it, but essentially what this is saying is a parcel tax is a special tax, it's two-thirds, vote to pass. Special taxes can be raised at a special election or a general election. We've been assuming they would be at the general election in 2020, but it does not have to be that way. And it's the same for, to call an election and place a ballot measure for a special or general tax. So I think from here, we want to turn it over to the Chair Hall and let her talk about foundation and fundraising.
Can I ask a question? Go ahead.
Mine's quick. Mr. Standing Manager, for the modest and the fully outfitted, what was the reason for potential funding not being the sale of the back lot?
The fully outfitted rebuild from the, what we're calling Joe Matthews report, would be a 16,500-square-foot structure, it'd be two stories, and we would likely need to move into the back lot for parking and access, just because it'd be so much larger. The modest library rebuild may or may not be able to sell the back lot. I just don't want to commit either way until we see a site plan with a library on the lots that we have.
Thanks.
That was my question.
The 5,000-foot addition, the timeline for that?
So it's, again, we would probably have to go back and assume an addition is going to require some type of funding. So if it's fundraising, we'd have to work with Chair Hall to give a timeline on that. If it's going to be a bond, bond issuance, then we'd probably have to wait till 2020. The fact is, it would probably be some combination of both. I don't think any of the options, other than fix what we have in place, is going to be quick. I think two years is kind of the starting line, and then we talk about construction and what we have to do from there.
Okay. Chair Hall, can we hear all about the library foundation?
Excuse me. We have started, we have put together a steering committee to form a foundation. We had done this in the past. So far, we have five members, I'm happy to say, that are on that steering committee. I did contact Bart Doyle because he did all of the legal work for the last time around, and he graciously said he would do it again this time around. And that includes applications to the IRS and all that kind of thing for a 501(c)(3). So our next step, then, is we need to have a goal. There's got to be some kind of a project that we have to decide, the city council needs to decide, whether it be an addition or the new library or whatever. We have to have a project that we can sell, because the next step would be to recruit foundation board members. Foundation board members, usually we recruit people that can give a significant gift, okay? And we also, we need an attorney, we usually have a financial advisor, et cetera. But we cannot recruit foundation board members unless we have a project that they can key into and say, "Oh, we're doing the building," or "We're doing an add-on," or whatever. So that decision has to be made before we recruit the foundation board members. Then, the next step, I'm briefing this because it can be involved. The next step would be conduct the public informational forums. At that time, we do need architectural drawings. We have, we usually have three or four people get up and make presentations, including the Director of Library, Christine. And we hold these at various places, venues. The most successful ones are done in-house in people's homes where they invite their neighbors, and it's close-knit, and they get to ask questions. White papers are also done. We have the handouts, so there's that component as well. Then after that comes the case statement. And I think all of you had a copy of the previous case statement, which has an emotional component to that as well. That comes, comes the case statement. We have to have somebody write the case statement. We had one written for the last time. I think it can be, there might need to be a little updates, because there's maybe some changes that were made, you know, because it does do a historical component to that as well. Then the next step is a feasibility study, because what we have to decide in our goal and in our project, we have to decide how much money we're going to need, okay? And how much money we should raise. We need to decide how much we're going to ask the public for, whether it be three mil- I, you know, I might be speaking out of turn yet, because you're not supposed to do this until you do a feasibility study, but I don't, I don't think there'd be a problem raising $3 million here. I really don't. And so we have to give a goal. And then we have the person do the feasibility study. They, in fact, tell you what you can raise, and they're really right on target. They may be a few thousand dollars off here and there, but they're really right on target once the feasibility study is done. And then that's when you go into campaign mode. That, when they do a feasibility study, let me backtrack a little bit, trying to condense this. They usually do anywhere between 40 and 60 interviews of people in the community, council people, people involved with the library, and people, general public. So they get a good cross-section of people. Then when you go into campaign mode, you have to hire a campaign manager. I know a lot of, particularly smaller agencies, don't like to do this because it is costly, but that is built into the amount of money that you want to raise. If it's going to cost you $200,000, which it may, when it costs, when you pay for everything, feasibility study and everything, then your campaign is 3 million, you have a campaign for 3.2 million. So that can be offset, the costs, the major costs. It doesn't, not going to cost you $200,000 upfront, it's over a period of time. And so then you go into campaign mode, there's a lot of work that has to be done because you have a campaign manager, and she has a staff person. Because all these meetings have to be, you have to have a person that sets up- you have to have a person that sets up appointments with each individual that they're going to talk to. Packages have to be made. Brochures have to be made. So there's all, a big component there. They also do take a good, good deal of time in the marketing process. So that's what happens, okay? And that, all of that takes approximately a year by the time you get all of that done. Now, there was a question about foundations and how that will impact the Friends of the Library. It does not. The Library, the Friends of the Library do exactly what they've been doing very well, more than very well, over the years. The Foundation, when it gets going, and that takes a little time, but they are responsible for major gifts, corporate gifts, grants. That's where the grants come in for, you know, planned giving and the ultimate endowment plan. And that takes some time, naturally. But it does not do special events that, you know, compete with the Friends of the Library. Now, in order to make all of this happen, regardless of what the decision is, whether it's an addition or it's a new library, there will have to be sustained leadership among volunteers, among staff, and among council. So that the community, to convince the community to move forward. And that's, you know, simple but not easy, you know?
Can I ask a little clarifying? So the Library Foundation will set up so that it will, the Foundation's first task will be the campaigning for the money?
Yeah, and it's a conduit, conduit for that money.
So they will raise the money. This is not for the parcel tax, though, right? Is it just for the fundraising money?
But if you decide, if there is a decision that we could do a parcel tax, when, when they do informational forums, that can be incorporated as well. And one of the, I think, I'm not, I can't remember. It may have been one of the city council members that addressed that at the forums.
Okay.
Question.
Yes?
So for me, I'm trying to see if the cart is before the horse or vice versa here. I mean, before we would agree to put something on a ballot, will we have a commitment for an amount of fundraising that will be paid for, you know, through a fundraising effort that is separate from a parcel tax? So in other words, if the bill is $9 million, you're going to tell the council that you're going to raise $3 million and we're only going to have to raise $6 million through taxes? Is that what we're?
Well, either, well, I don't know. If you want to do taxes, what about, you know, floating a bond? There's probably a number of areas that you can. I know last time they had, we talked about pledging the city's Community Development Block Grant. You know, there was Melo Russe that was discussed. And, or a combination of things.
Let me ask the question a different way. Okay, we're going to, there has to be a timeline for going to the voters. If we just assume a year and a half from now is the right time, that's the next municipal election?
Yeah, once the decision has been made by the city council, which project they want to have, then we can, most of that money that you're going to raise for, from a campaign, will outfit the library.
The foundation campaign?
Yes. That will outfit the library. The technology, the roof.
Well, it's all part of a big number, whatever that top-line number is.
No, but I would like to say, this is really going overboard, but I would like to say, if the Foundation can raise 50% of the cost, would the city be able to have the other 50% of the cost?
Well, in other words, we, we don't have the money. We would have to go to the voters. So this, yeah, so that's what I'm looking for, is a percentage, you know, a commitment. And I'm just assuming that either the Library Board of Trustees or Friends of the Library is going to do what you described as far as this process for fundraising. So the other question is, what do you expect of the city council? What are you expecting? I mean, are you expecting us to just put, to support you by putting something on the ballot to get some of the money, ask the voters to pay?
If that's, if that's the way we have to, if that's the way the city has to go to fund the library, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are, and again, I understand what you're saying. If we're all pulling on the rope together, that's a very important thing.
Yeah, it really is.
So consensus is really, really important with this, yeah.
Makes a huge difference.
Okay, but we're going to, at some point, need to know, and I'll defer to our city staff to tell us when that time is to go to the voters. You know, there's an engineering studies. I mean, it's not easy to, it's not a trivial thing to go for a parcel tax. So we're going to have to have a number, I suppose, at some time, to do a parcel tax. So we'll need to know from you how much you can fundraise. By then, we'll have to know how much the project is going to cost so that we, you know, so there's got to be a timeline here.
Can I interject? I feel like the, if you, once they decide what we want to do here, I really don't think the Foundation or the Board ought to be taking the lead here. I think we need, as, to be, as a council, we need to be very clear about what we think is the right choice for the city. We need to lead on, we need to decide what we want to ask the taxpayers for. And then we need to ask you what the component is that you reasonably think you could raise. Because once we've made that decision and you've made it public what you're shooting for, it makes it easier for us to sell the whole thing.
Yeah.
If you're talking about 30 or 40% of the project, that's a lot easier to sell the public than if we're talking about, you know, just putting chairs in the building. So I don't know if that goes to your question?
It's, yeah, it's part of, yeah. I'm just, I'm not sure on the timeline. I'm not sure how much we would need to ask for. But I guess what we need is an agreement that we're, you know, I'll just throw it out there to go for the, what you suggested, the moderate bill.
So let me interject. So what we need to do now is give staff direction on one or two of the options that they need to go back and do some further research. And then they'll bring this back to council.
So I still have some questions before we-
Oh, I know. I'm just, you know, so right now, you know, even though we, we've explored all the funding options, it's really, we just need to come back with more of that information. And then the Foundation can help. Yes, what are your questions?
So, Mr. Standing Manager, maybe this is for our city attorney also. That parcel tax slide, I know we kind of went through it really fast, but I had questions on that. So a couple of questions. I don't know if it was, if it was on there. How, what are the different ways that a parcel tax can get onto the ballot? And two, I feel like I saw that it does not need to align with a general and doesn't need to consolidate. We can call for a special. So if I can have those two questions answered, please.
Yes, it can go on a special election or a general election. Practically speaking, the reason we're putting it at 2020 is if council gave direction tonight to do an addition or a new building, work would begin probably tomorrow to start getting firm costs and design and site plan and architectural drawings so we could come back and say, the estimate from the Joe Matthews' report was 11.2. The actual cost is 10.9 or 14.4. And then we can start going in that direction. But the, the two options we have for funding are the parcel tax or the property tax. The difference is, parcel tax is a flat rate. The property tax, I believe, could be used for the infrastructure projects. So we may actually be mixing the two together in how it's funded. But I think a lot of those decisions on how it comes out is going to be based, I think, in my opinion, on what the cost is and what the feasibility is, is some of the designs that we're talking about tonight.
So my question actually is, how does a parcel get, tax get put on the ballot? Obviously, council can decide, yeah, we're going to have it on the ballot. What are the other means? Could it just be a, is there a signature gathering? If the city council decides tonight or in a few weeks, we do not want to support a parcel tax, what is the other way that it can get onto the ballot?
Regardless of, regardless of, regardless of who authors the parcel tax, whether that might be a citizens initiative with signature gathering or whether the council does it, it's still going to require a two-thirds vote. If the council does it, then you, you will have had the opportunity to look at what you're trying to raise money for. You have an idea of how much you need to raise it for. And you also have the opportunity to create an ordinance, which would describe the parcel tax and the purposes of it. For example, you, a parcel tax is going to take two-thirds vote anyway. You might as well call it a library special tax for this purpose, rather than just a parcel tax. It's still going to take a two-thirds vote. You might as well call it a special tax. And so other cities that have done this have really been most successful by having the city actually create the proposed ordinance, which creates your library special tax and sets forth the tax rate chart within it, sets forth whether there'd be a CPI adjustment. That all gets folded into the ordinance. So you draft that, and everything else is the same as placing anything on the ballot. So it would be the resolution calling the election, the call of the question, and then people voting on it can read the attached proposed ordinance and see exactly what it would, would do. So that's, yes, it could be done by citizens initiative, but that's a lot of extra steps with signature gathering, whereas the council can, could simply prepare it as an ordinance.
And how many signatures would have to be gathered if it was a citizens initiative?
5% of the amount of registered voters in the last gubernatorial election who actually voted for a governor.
About 30.
Yeah. It's, it's not a big number. It's not a big number when it comes to a tax. That's true.
If the city council did, they could be heroic, right?
Yes.
Instead of telling you to go get a bunch of signatures?
My, in addition to that, as we talked about earlier in our city council meeting, there may come a time when we might need to do a parcel tax for the stormwater MS4 permit. Would that then be, if we went down that road, would that be a separate tax? Or is there a way that you can combine the two?
It would, it would likely be a separate tax. Again, any parcel tax, two-thirds vote. Whether you're talking about raising money on a parcel tax, just to throw into the general fund to pay for things like that, library, stormwater, you know, any number of things that this, it doesn't matter. It's still going to take a two-thirds vote. So it's, you are likely to have more success. And the California Legislative Analyst has done studies on this, that people are more likely to vote and support for a special tax because they know where it's going. They know what you're going to use it for. And they either support that thing or they don't. So I would suggest that it'd be better to create a library tax, it's still a parcel tax. And then if you needed to use another revenue-raising measure that also was a parcel tax, there were several others that you could choose from, then it would just be a separate parcel tax.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. And Terry, correct me if I'm wrong. I guess the, the mechanics are, the parcel tax or the special library tax, the city would need, let's say, $9 million upfront. So we would, we would propose floating a bond upfront so we have that money upfront. The parcel tax then pays back that bond over 30 years, correct?
That, that is one, yes.
One way of doing it.
That's one way of doing it, is you're setting the parcel tax, AK, the special library tax, and the money that you're raising is for debt service on a bond. That is one method, yes.
And I think, you know, the question that I have, I think Pat's overview of the fundraising and the foundation, I think it's all extremely helpful. And the question is really going to be whether, if we decide today that the modest library rebuild is what we want to do. Let's say that's, you know, that's the vision of the Library Board of Trustees, the council's on board. The question is whether you're, in my, in my mind, whether the Foundation and the Friends, whether your efforts are better spent, not necessarily fundraising $2 to $3 million, but really helping the city run a campaign to pass a parcel tax for the full amount. Because to me, I look at, you know, with $2 to $3 million of fundraising from the Foundation, you're really only going from a $20 parcel tax number to like a $16 parcel tax number. And to me, that doesn't seem material. You're either going to pass it at $20 or you're not. I don't think whether it goes down to 16, to me, makes a material difference. That's what my gut says. And, you know, from the political perspective, the question is, do you want really smart, energetic folks out there raising money? Or do you want them talking to their neighbors and not saying, give me more money, but just, you know, vote for this parcel tax because here's the project and here's how great it is? And so I guess my question is, other cities have done this recently, South Pasadena, San Marino. What did they do? Because they did it successfully. And why don't we just model, why don't we just-
Monrovia as well.
Yeah, and Monrovia. What did they do? And why don't we just model it off of that, right? I mean, so do we know what they did? Do they have a foundation raising money? Or I would probably think that they just had a group of folks, the Friends, the Foundation, helping the city, you know, the city puts the parcel tax on the ballot and they come up with the plans. I would think that they were out just actually talking to folks. But I, I could be wrong. I just don't, I don't really know how those campaigns went down.
I, I don't think you're wrong. I think that, because Monrovia, they voted to text themselves to build a new library. And, which was, was fine. The, the object of the foundation is basically it can do it, and it's, it, it has, you have the, to have funds in perpetuity. See what I'm saying? Because that's what they do. I mean, they do, they provide, because you're going to raise the money to build a library, but you're going to have ongoing expenses over the years. So you have, that's where the grants come in. We talked about grants, I think, Tony talked about grants. If you do planned giving, that's people who give money, put money in their wills or estates to give to the library. An endowment. Endowment gives you money in perpetuity over the years. So that, that's basically what a foundation does.
Yeah.
You know?
And I guess my, you know, do we know if South Pasadena did that or if Monrovia did that? Or do they just?
I don't know what they-
My hunch is that they probably just put it on the ballot, My hunch is that they probably just put it on the ballot, the parcel tax covered the full costs, and the voters voted, voted it in, you know?
There's no reason why you can't do a foundation.
Right.
But I think what the mayor, Pro Tem, is saying is not to do, not to have the foundation be to fundraise for the library.
Right, for the library building.
So you want, you're, what you're saying is paying, having a parcel tax or whatever.
Yeah.
That takes care of everything, including the insights?
Yeah. Well, because I think if we, if we think that the modest library rebuild is the way to go, you're going to need a parcel tax.
Yes.
Period. So my point is, why, this is all a lot of effort. And it's, it could work, but it's a lot of effort from a lot of volunteers. And I guess my view of things is, you know, if you're going to put the parcel tax on, whether it's twenty dollars or sixteen dollars, which is that, the delta is whatever the foundation could come up with. I mean, just put it at twenty dollars and just have, the effort is the effort. And the parcel tax, I think, would get passed at twenty dollars or sixteen dollars. And, yeah.
Can I say something about that? Because I saw it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
I thought that if there was a, a foundation raising money, I thought that would be a really important component to help sell it.
See, I guess it wouldn't move, yeah, I guess it wouldn't move the needle for me. Just as a voter, I would either, I would either be ready to do it, or I wouldn't. But that's, two different voters could, could view it very differently. So I guess it's.
You could be right. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of libraries in the past few years have started their own foundations.
And I think they.
And that's because, you know, they wanted continuous income.
Yeah.
And that was the way to go.
I'm just wondering if we overcomplicate it by doing this kind of dual fundraising parcel tax thing, and then, you know?
The other side of this, though, is.
I can actually answer the question regarding South Pasadena, only because I represent them. They, they, they just went to the voters. The library board of trustees, the council members, citizens just walked in, sold the parcel tax. Now, their parcel tax is not debt service for a bond measure. It's additional, it's a library special tax, and it's additional money that's been raised since they first proposed it in nineteen ninety-five to supplement their library. But that's just what they did. Now, in.
They're not building a new library.
They're not building a new library. Now, the South Pasadena Library Board really wants to and is working on trying to form a foundation, which is basically a nonprofit public benefit corporation. So, yes, they see a lot of value in that, and I, I think that they will eventually get there. But it didn't exist at the time that they did their library parcel tax, which they've had on, as an ordinance on their books since nineteen ninety-five. It's been, they've gone to the voters several times to update it, to extend it, to put a CPI adjuster on it. And their particular library parcel tax isn't in perpetuity. I think it will expire in another eight years, so somewhere down the road, they'll have to think about going back. In the parcel tax or to spend to show the voters? That I don't know, because cities are not, no government is allowed to use public facilities such as, you know, meeting rooms, copying machines, any of that, to actually advocate for a ballot measure. But we can use public government facilities to create informational material about what does the ballot measure do, what happens if you have it, what happens if you don't. So I don't really know how much money was spent.
Oh, I mean, how much money did they raise?
Oh, do they raise? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. They raise some, approximately between three and four hundred thousand a year. And they, it's a, it's a flat tax. And the current amount for a single-family home, depending on the size of the lot, is anywhere from thirty-four bucks a year. Yeah, it's, it's a small amount. But remember, it's not debt service for a bond measure, but it could have been.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm.
Thirty-four dollars a year, a month, or?
Thirty-four dollars a year, not, not a month. Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge amount.
I'm going to bring it back to council. Any other questions before? Okay.
Comment. Just to take your point, Mayor Pro Tem. I don't see the, I agree with you. I think the sixteen versus twenty, how much am I paying a month? I think that's all probably not particularly useful. But I do think that the foundation making an early commitment to a big number and doing this in a high-profile manner helps sell the whole package. The average voter, I think, would be influenced by the fact that, hey, I'm not being asked to bear the whole burden here. There are people out there who think this is important enough that they want to take on a significant chunk of it. So I think that part of it could be marketed effectively. I don't, I do, I do take your point, though, that the four or five bucks a month less, I don't think is going to be a big selling point.
That's a good point, yeah.
Any other questions? Comments? So what I'm hearing, tell me if I'm wrong. I'm hearing that we probably want to investigate the modest new building. Is there any thought about extending the one for the extension? Where we keep our building and add something else to it?
I, I'm not really in favor of that. I think.
It just doesn't sound like it's worth the time or the effort or the money, frankly.
Yeah.
So.
I would like to just, and this is just my thought, I don't know if this is the time to say it, but I'd like to try to fit this in and also sell the lot to help fund it, just to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. So if the modest proposal, when we ask an architect to look at, if this is the direction we're going, I'd like to try to make it fit on the existing lot so we can get the one point four million to help fund it.
Anybody else? Thoughts?
My, my reaction.
We haven't gone to public comment yet.
That's right.
You're ready when we go, okay?
Ready.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was going to wait for discussion. I'm, I'm public comment.
Can, can I say something to your point? We had quite a lengthy discussion about the back lot, which you also have to think about, it, it does provide funds, but you also would lose that southern access, which a lot of people use that to get in and out of the library, because you have to think about, how do you turn around and go back out? So that complicates some of the issue, as well as terms of how large you build the space back there. Because you might use some of the parking space that's now available.
Okay, I guess we'll go to public comment.
All right.
We have someone anxious to talk to us.
Thank you. Robert Stockley, East Laurel. First of all, I want to thank you for focusing on the library, going through the process of gathering community input, having this meeting, so forth. It is a very complicated process. And I always sit in these meetings and talk, here we talk about these, this mid-century building, and my knees start to creak because this is a mid-century body. But having sympathy pains with the library, I think we have to do something. And I think you're on the right track. I think, it sounds like you're headed for the right option. But to complicate things a little bit more, I'd like to suggest that you study another avenue, which is a library district. The formation of which might be the mechanism for doing the construction and for future operations. Altadena is sort of the example that I would point us towards, where it's part of the county, but they have a library district that supports their library and, and owns the library. It has certain advantages, it has certain complications. Some of the advantages is that district now comes out of the general fund as far as an operation of a public facility. That may have impact for you as you're thinking about your other financing needs. And another advantage is, the library is this emotional draw for the community. If you're going to go out and ask for stormwater money, it's not going to have the same appeal as the library. It just, you can't do it. So it lends itself towards the sort of vision that Mr. Proctor so eloquently put forward. And that is what, as Ms. Hall said, sells. That's how you raise money, whether it's through a tax or a foundation. So I would suggest that we take a hard look at that as a viable option as we're looking at mechanisms for raising the money. And I think, you know, maybe now is the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
D. Alcorn, Grandview. Again, I'd like to say what Mr. Stockley said, that you're to be committed for really moving something along. When I, when I see this thing, it put me in mind of the mains, for the water mains in the city. That thing, you know, they've been, been underfunded forever. They've been talked forever about while doing, it finally was kicked down the road, and some action is finally being taken. And I'd like to see that, that happen here, because, you know, it's, you say, you were talking about seventy, they did some other, probably before that, they were talking about, well, let's do something. Maybe we got some money, maybe we don't. And I think that you, that I commend you, because I, and if I understand where you're really going with this, you're to be committed, because you're not kicking the road, the can down the road. And I would like to see some action come out of this. And it really is, because I think, Mr. Herbie, and I, I, I kind of disagree with you, is it say, well, it's only twenty bucks, and so let's put it on there, you know, sixteen, because you get participation, you get commitment, and you have a visibility of, of the community being, being for it. Let's say, okay, well, let's put this out, and people are going to pay it or buy it or not. And I think that, like, you get the foundation, I think it's absolutely necessary to show that you do have the support, and you do have a long-term commitment. The more participation you get, the more involved people become, the more it's theirs. Right now, you have a lot of that going on right now. So I think it's necessary that you do something like that. Now, as far as, and the funding like that, that has to be resolved. And I think that, that I, I had a little problem with that, with the, with the survey. There were some questions I had. I, I sort of, you know, assumed a lot of things when I voted. I mean, when I put my, my two percents in. But I still had a lot of questions about what it really did mean. And I think that's part of the, part of the process, that maybe you've got some sort of ambiguity of the response to it. Because I did. When I saw it, I said, man, I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure what that means. I kind of think it means this. So I, I put my two perci, two percents in on it. So I think that's necessary, to have that sort of thing going on. And as far as the commitment, I think you do have, we'll, we'll get a commitment. I think that Mrs. Hall is correct. You will get the support of these people. You will get it. And, but not by just saying, okay, take it or leave it. And I, that's kind of, that, you know, it came across to me like you were saying, okay, well, put it out there. We don't have to sell them. We'll do it. Too much work? I think the work is necessary, because that's part of the process. You get the commitment. You get people doing it, and you show people are involved. The more they get involved, the more it, it sort of snowballs. I think it'll make a big difference. I mean, just as my thought on that. But I think that, that, talking about the other thing, the Altadena has, they have a parcel tax, and they have it every ten years. They just redid it. So it can be done, that, you know, maybe there's a foundation, but that's part of the process. But it doesn't have to be a foundation. But I think that, that they do commit it. Every year, every ten years, Altadena votes, yeah, we're going, we want a library, we're going to do it. And I think that there was, sorry, that came back, is that the library means a lot to a lot of people. And that, there was a story that Pat told me, when she was involved in, with some of the people at the library, is that a woman came in, she was a new, a new person that came in, and she brought her baby in, and they got involved in this stuff, and she became more involved in the city. And that was her avenue for doing this. And she, that's the way she got involved in the city. And it was, that to her was their modding. And I think that, that you really have to have the mission, and not just, just say, okay, well, it's going to cost you much, it's going to do this other stuff. Because that's what people said fifty years ago about the mains. You know, we're stopped by the water mains, and well, it's too much, we're going to pay for it. Take it down the road, there's other people paying for it. And I don't think we should do that. We should do it right now, carry on with it, and go with it. I mean, we, really go for it. I think that, because, I think Pat Hall is exactly right. People will do it, and you'll get the support.
Thank you.
Because they, and they say, okay, well, it's only twenty percent or thirty percent of number like that, but there's a whole aspect of that. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We have a couple tasks aside, for us right now, and that is to provide direction to our staff. And unless you want to have some more discussion.
Well, I definitely want to comment. I, I think, I appreciate what we've been able to do today in terms of this joint meeting, because I think there were a lot of assumptions as to what did the trustees mean, and what do they want to do? And I think the step in terms of the survey was a great step, even though I know there was questions as to how it was designed. I think there's still some validity and value there. But nevertheless, this is a, an important conversation. I still look, I should say still, but I, I look at our budget as a whole. I look at what our major priorities are. I think about what our core services are. I love the vision of where we're going with the library. I, I want to be there, and I want to see how we can make that happen. I just don't see it in the form of a parcel tax. I'm concerned about the other priorities we have as a city. Mr. Alcorn brought up our water mains. We're putting a lot of money into it, and, but we're not there yet. It's still going to be ten, fifteen, twenty years out. We talked about the MS four permit today and the anticipated costs there. Unfortunately, those are not sexy things. It's, I don't know if I can sell a parcel tax on water mains and on an MS four permit. I think very unlikely that I can. And, and I think about all of our other needs, when it comes to police, when it comes to fire, and really what our core services are. And that's where I think our priorities need to be, in terms of our main budget and our general fund. All of that being said, I think you can sell a parcel tax. I think when you're talking about the emotional plea for it, that's where the emotion is going to be. But I would just say personally, I just don't think this is where we should spend our resources and time in terms of our staff. I think as a individual and as a citizen, I would, I would love to give my time in terms of fundraising and campaigning, but I just don't see it, that it should be placed here. All that being said, if, if this is the decision, you know, if I'm the lone dissenter, and, and I don't support a parcel tax going through, and it still goes to the, to the voters, I think the voters will have their say, and, and that's really what our democracy is supposed to be about. But I would like to see our, our time in our budget, really prioritizing long-term sustainability for our city.
I just have a question for you, though. What, what option are you recommending that, that we take, then?
You know, I want to make sure it's a safe place. I would, I'd like to see how we can sell the back lot and see how we can improve and make sure, understanding that it would decrease our size. And unfortunately, that's not the ideal. I wish there was a way we can keep it safe, so that we could allow some time for campaigning and fundraising. I would be happy to donate time into that, because I think you can raise the money. When you talked about three million dollars, I think you can raise that in a heartbeat. If we were very intentional about what the project goal is, nine million might be a little harder, but I, I think that there is money that our residents and even outside folks would be willing to donate. I do, my work is in nonprofit work. We get corporate sponsors all the time. We get grants all the time. It takes more effort. I get that. I think this is an easier pathway to go to the voters. But it's, when I think about the benefits of a parcel tax, and, and I get it. I know a lot of people go to the library. We have the numbers that show it. Well, when I'm looking at the total population of the residents, I'd like to see where the parcel tax would really benefit more of the people, not just a small percentage.
Anybody else? Comments?
Well, I'll, ten, my, I'll give you my ten cents worth. I'm, I don't think it'll surprise anyone that I would be in favor of the, I think we're calling it the modest new library. Not really fond of that name. I don't think you sell anybody on anything by calling it modest. So I hope that from a marketing point of view, if we were to decide to do it, that we would quickly change the name.
This new life.
I, I, you know, there's so many different ways to conceptualize this, this whole discussion. You know, as a fellow citizen, taxpayer, I'm not particularly anxious to spend more money, more of my money on taxes. No one is. And so I do think it comes down to prioritization. I really do. And I feel like you go back to Trustee Proctor's presentation. Some aspects of that, I think, we tend to take for granted. And some aspects of how the community actually fits itself together and develops its own identity over time, I think, there's no way to really just say, put that together structurally. It happens, kind of organically. Places like libraries are where it happens. And we just don't have that many places anymore in life. I, I feel like, you know, where do I go? I go where everyone else goes. You know, I have to do commercial activities all the time. Everywhere I go, noise, bang, 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 music everywhere. Course language. It's, it's a crazy frenetic society we live in. But, you know, you walk into a library, it's like, what is this place? It's civilized. People are doing noble things. So I, I feel like it's worth it. Now, the question really is, is about two hundred dollars a year worth it? And I think people, when you start having an open discussion about that, two hundred dollars a year, I think most people would, if you really tell them, well, here, here are all the benefits. Here are the whole things you and your family can do. This is what it would cost, about two hundred bucks a year. I really feel like most people are going to say, hey, wait, that's a bargain. That's, are you kidding me? I'm concerned with all the things I could spend that two hundred dollars on. So I think this can be sold. I've never believed that it couldn't be sold. I think a parcel tax could be sold. I respect my colleague's position on this. I, I do believe that we have financial challenges ahead of us. Obviously, in the general fund, just, just getting our fire department fully funded and taking on some of the issues having to do with the physical plan of our entire city government. You know, this, the library building's not the only building that we have problems with down at City Hall. But it seems to me that we only have rare opportunities to, what, what, what did you say? I think in the last meeting, to present a, a vision for the community that it could kind of start thinking of itself, a vision that would, that would actually get us thinking about ourselves and what we really value.
Right.
And I think this is in a discussion of a place like this where that happens. And I think that's a discussion we should have.
The phrase I used was a courageous conversation. And by that, I mean.
How about the phrase I used was a courageous conversation, and by that I mean, thinking long-term. Where, where do we want our, what do we want for our kids and grandkids?
Yeah. So I support this, I hope that I can get a majority of my colleagues to support it, but, and I want to thank you all, I know you've put a lot of your heart and soul into this, and I appreciate you being here tonight, it's made a big difference, I think, for all of us and for the city.
And I just want to remind everybody, we're not making a decision tonight, we're simply providing direction, and we'll have something else come back.
Okay.
I, for one, would like to thank you for having us here.
Thank you for having me.
And being open to having this discussion, and being able to listen to what we're saying, you know, we're, we're just trying to find our way through this like you are, and we're just citizens of the community like you are, and trying to figure it out.
Let me finish up with the council. Mayor Protam, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I, I'll comment now, and I, I still think that, one, this has been extremely useful, and very thankful for the library board to have put in, and previous library boards, which Councilmember Goss sat on, Mayor Stockley sat on, you know, when I was a liaison back, when I first was on council, I mean, this was a conversation at the previous library boards, with Mr. Ziff, I think had just come on. I mean, this has been going on for so many years, and I think that, thank you for keeping at it, and I think that we, as a council, have brought it up throughout the years, and, you know, my view's always been, look, the people are gonna have to vote with their, with their feet, and they're gonna have to vote with their pens, you know, at the ballot box. I always thought that, and I always thought if you want any sort of material development or change to the library, it would have to go through a parcel tax. And I said a couple meetings ago, I'm convinced that you, you can probably get it done, and my view is that we do need to get, you know, a, a new library, and we probably do need the, the complete raise and rebuild, because I think it's probably the most cost-efficient thing to do. However, I do think that you're going to have, and I think Mr. Maguire hit on it, and I continue to think it's gonna be the big question amongst voters, and I think Council Mayor Asmendi is going to reflect a lot of voters that just say, priority-wise, this isn't, this isn't the top of my list, and I would much rather see you sell that back lot, and just revamp and remodel what you have, even though you're going to lose some collection, but I think you're gonna keep that building, and I, and again, I think that is important to some people. So I personally am fine, and, and on board with going forward with the modest rebuild, you know, but I do think that this is all about now going forward, like, whether you think, you know, we can sell that. And going back to my point about the foundation and its role, you know, I do think that if we, as a city council, are prepared to go forward with this, however many vote for it eventually, I don't think that we should be putting a foundation on the hook for anything. That's my personal view. I think this really should be a, if this is a $9 million project, we're prepared to go out, whether it's through a library, you know, district, a parcel tax, whatever it is, we're prepared to ask the voters for all of it. And I, that's just my view, because I think that, you know, having the foundation's great, and I think the foundation can serve a very important role beyond fundraising millions of dollars for something like this. I just think it's really, really hard to ask people to, to do that, but maybe I can be convinced otherwise, we're not making that decision tonight. I'll put the, I'll put the funding and the, and all that aside. I, I am in...
My mind's open on that.
What's that? Yeah. I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with the modest library rebuild, but I think that, you know, we're really gonna have to focus on folks that we've heard tonight, and we've heard from the deists, that are just, frankly, you know, priority-wise, are not convinced that this is the best use of our money, so.
So I would just like to add a couple comments.
I comment also after you, or usually the mayor wraps up.
Okay, well, very quickly, because, yeah, if you can do it real quick.
Okay. I think I would just be in favor of a modest library rebuild, and I agree, we don't need to decide today, the point is, what is the best way to get it done? And to Councilmember Arisbendy's comments, that maybe that's not a good idea, hey, we've got a fallback plan, which is if it fails, and we can't raise the money to do the modest rebuild, fine, sell the lot, fix the building, put the issue away for at least our terms, and another council will deal with it again, and you're back in this cycle of always trying to fix it, you know?
And actually, that's what my comment was. I think that we need to come back with what it's gonna look like if we sell that back lot, and we repurpose the library. I watch a lot of HGTV shows, and there's a lot of things that you could do. So I would like to see that, because I am not as optimistic as you all are, because I keep seeing that 56% said no, they would not vote for a parcel tax, and we have to, we have to be responsible and say, okay, well, if that doesn't happen, then what are we gonna do? Because I think we're all in agreement that we want to be able to support and fix the library, and make it safe, and fix it up a little bit. At the same time, we don't have the finances to do that, it's gonna really depend on the voters, and there is a big chance that the voters will not approve of parcel tax. I also have grave concerns about putting a parcel tax on for the library, when we have $24 million coming down the pike for the stormwater. So I would like to see if it's agreeable to everybody, if we bring both of those options back, and if you're...
Which options, you?
So it'll be to the modest one, and then the 1.4, where we sell the back lot and do...
Okay, so why, I thought we were trying to sort out and give direction to the city now, take our top priority.
Those are the two, right? So those are the two that we need to have, I think, more information on, and then we can make a decision.
What information would you be expecting them to bring?
Well, there, our city manager's already said that, that we have to have more information on the debt, he wants to go into that a little bit more, we need to have a timeline, we need to understand what's gonna happen if we decide to raise the building, where, where are we gonna have our library services, what's that gonna cost to move that over there? There's a lot of things to consider, we can't, I don't think we can make a solid decision based on just the limited information we have here. We'd have to have a solid decision.
Staff can certainly bring back more information on one or multiple proposals, if that's what council prefers. So I, I think at this point, we know, we have enough direction, that we're certainly bringing back information on what we're going to call, right now, the modest rebuild. If council, the mayor's request, wants us to bring back on other options, we're happy to do that as well.
I would like to see what the one, I would like to see what the alternative is.
I'm not in agreement.
I'm not either.
Wait, what?
I, I feel like that's what the purpose of this meeting was tonight, is to set a priority, and then, then we'll get more information, and architectural design, drawings, all the rest, and we can decide for, at that point, if we really want to pull the trigger, but I thought at least we were picking an option tonight to send this.
I know. But I think that we didn't pay enough attention to what we could do, and what it would look like for a fallback, to do the 1.4. I think we owe it to our, our citizens to at least look at that as our fallback, so we know what it looks like. Because we may, we have to do something, right? We can't just say, oh, we're going to do a, we're gonna replace the building, and the people are gonna pay for it. We still have the responsibility of making sure this library is safe, so we can't wait until they say, no, right? We're not gonna, we're not gonna pass that, we need to have something in the back burner. And I would like to see what that would look like, what it would cost, and what the timeline was. So if the parcel tax does not pass, that we know that we can put something in place in six months, that we can put something in place in eight months, what that's gonna look like. If the, if we're gonna raise the building, I think we owe it to our citizens to know what that's gonna look like. If it's down, where is it gonna be extra cost to us, to have to move the library stuff someplace else? Where is that gonna go? Those are all decisions that we at least have to do our due diligence and know that upfront. Those are things that we don't know, those hidden costs.
Are you still personally, between the modest rebuild or the 1.4, still deciding, still sorting things out?
No, I would like to, I would love to be able to do the modest rebuild, I'm just not optimistic it will pass. And so I feel that we, we have to be diligent, and at least have a backup.
So that's kind of how I see it, but I, my direction to staff is a little different. The direction to staff would be, that we, as a council, agree that we want to pursue this option, and also detail out the fallback position.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Right.
But I mean, I, that's, direction is, we want to pursue the modest build.
We, we do, and we need to have a backup plan, and we're not, and I want to make it clear, the decision hasn't been made that we're gonna do the modest, because we don't have all that information, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's not before us for a formal vote, yes. We're just giving direction.
Well, I think, I'm perfectly willing to support what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's very reasonable.
And then to clarify, do you need four, four out of five members to put a parcel tax ballot measure, or is it, do you need three or five, you know, what are the numbers you need? This is going a couple steps forward, but, do you need four? Okay, you need four.
Just a quick follow-up question. In any of these options, what do we have in place right now to ensure that it is safe while people are going inside?
So you heard, I actually forget who made the comment, but that teens and children aren't allowed in the basement anymore, right? There's, one of the things we're doing is areas we can't make safe, we're no longer allowing access to. In the interim, as we explore raising the building, we will have to spend some funding to ensure it's safe and accessible, and we'll have to continue to follow our transition plan on ADA. How much that is going to be, I think we'll have to come back with the plan. I don't believe it'll be a substantial amount, but we do know of issues that we have to improve as, as part of keeping the building operating, it sounds like, as a minimum of two to three years.
And what, was part of what the JPIA was doing with ADA, was some of those projects pending in the library?
I would have to respond back to you, I'm not positive.
So I think you have enough direction, councils in agreement. I would just like to say thank you to the Board of Directors, our Board of Trustees, for all of your work and putting this together. I certainly hope we can, you know, do a building, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure it's a top priority, but hopefully we can get it done, and you can get those people out there to vote.
Thank you.
I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Does the library have to motion to adjourn?